First item on the agenda is various comments by the mayor. First, we have a retiring staff member, Teresa Lorela, from the Parks and Recreation Department. And I want to read a resolution of appreciation. Whereas Teresa H. Lorela has been a dedicated employee of the City of Lake Forest since October the 12th, 1998, and whereas Teresa Lorela will honorably retire from the city on September the 28th, 2018. I guess that's happened already. Whereas Teresa has served as an administrative assistant throughout her career, and whereas Teresa has been a dedicated member of the City of Lake Forest administrative team, and has helped manage the Parks and Recreation Department's finances, and whereas Teresa has worked tirelessly to manage the Parks and Recreation Department's customer service team to provide excellent service to the residents of our community, and whereas Teresa has successfully implemented and managed the RecTrak registration software system, and shared a wealth of knowledge in training all staff to use the system, and whereas Teresa served on the Park and Recreation Scholarship Committee, helping participants access quality programs and activities, has actively participated in the Parks and Recreation special events, and has dedicated herself to the positive execution of the Friends of Parks and Recreation Foundation festivals and events, and whereas Teresa has brought her own special kind of warmth and joy to the Recreation Department and all that have been blessed to have participated and worked with her, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Lake Forest that the Council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Teresa H. Lorela for a public service faithfully performed. And be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to Teresa H. Lorela with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the October 1st, 2018 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'm moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not hearing any? The motion carries. Teresa, come forward.
I should say, before you give her that, she's a Brewers fan, so we may not want to do that.
Next, I'd like to ask the Chief of Police, Carl Waldorf, to step forward to introduce the city's two newest police officers, Tyler Seagee and Matthew Arnold.
Alan.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. This is obviously always a big night for not only the officers, but their families, so we really appreciate you doing this.
Okay. So the introduction, you mean? Okay. All right, we'll do this one at a time. Tyler. Okay, Tyler, we'll do your turn. Okay. All right. I, Tyler Seagee.
I, Tyler Seagee.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend
the constitutions of the United States and the State of Illinois.
The constitutions of the United States and the State of Illinois.
And will diligently enforce the laws of the State of Illinois.
And will diligently enforce the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the City of Lake Forest.
And the City of Lake Forest.
And that I will faithfully execute
And I will faithfully execute
the duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the best of my knowledge and ability.
For the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations. Get a little closer. Put your right hand. I, Matthew Allen.
I, Matthew Allen.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend
the constitutions of the United States and the State of Illinois.
The constitutions of the State of Illinois and
Hmm, that's
Not sure what that is.
And will diligently enforce
And will diligently enforce
the laws of the State of Illinois.
The laws of the State of Illinois.
And the City of Lake Forest.
And the City of Lake Forest.
And that I will faithfully execute
And that I will faithfully execute
the duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the best of my knowledge and ability.
For the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations. I'll have a tea photo, and then do a circle. Apparently I would never pass a table. Couple more.
Thank you very much.
Now, I know there's a large number of folks in Parks and Recreation and the police force who got some celebrating to do tonight, so you're welcome to leave at this point as we go forward in our agenda.
But the crying baby has to stay.
Happy.
That's pretty good, right?
We don't usually have babies here, so.
Next, I'd like to insert something here, which is to provide an update report regarding the West Side Rail Line. Last Friday morning, Bob Kylie and myself met with Randy Blankenhorn, the Illinois Secretary of Transportation, otherwise known as IDOT, and two staff members to follow up on his letters and press release in September regarding the secretary's plans, process, and timing for engaging the communities affected by the proposed third-track plan on the Milwaukee District Rail Line traversing West Lake Forest. Jim Patterson, Glenview Village President, was to participate in the meeting but had to cancel on short notice. The secretary reiterated the "Illinois Hold" he has placed on the third-track project is indefinite in time and will not be lifted until and if satisfactory resolution of challenges it poses on communities are resolved. Towards this goal, he referenced various alternative ideas for routing freight trains that are now being studied, but no details were provided nor was there a clear sense of timing for such reports. The secretary also repeated there is no capital available for a third-track project for the foreseeable future from the state and federal sources, as many more projects elsewhere have much higher priorities. We communicated that Lake Forest wanted to be kept abreast of all developments, as IDOT's plans, their contents, and timing for community engagement are set. The secretary and his staff agreed. We also asked the secretary to expedite the release of previously approved engineering funds in the amount of $281,000 to complete the pedestrian underpass engineering for West Lake Forest Station. These funds have been held up for many months due to the state's fiscal challenges. While not committing to do so, we have reasonable hope these funds could be forthcoming shortly from IDOT. Finishing this engineering allows costing studies to be completed for the underpass, which then allows the city to get in line for federal funding, which is planned to be matched approximately 50% by a combination of corporate and public support. The secretary was quite interested in the work in progress with Metra to provide additional passenger service to and from West Lake Forest in concert with the needs of Lake Forest residents, employers, and institutions, and those in adjacent communities. We discussed the ridership Keschmidt study prepared by the Transportation Center at DePaul, which the secretary asked his team to study and to report back to him regarding the evident demand for Amtrak service at West Lake Forest Station. Next, in a related way, is an item labeled "Consideration of Approval of a Contribution Agreement with Lake County Partners Regarding the Establishment of a Pilot Program and Installation of a Universal Crossover on the Milwaukee District North Line." We've got some materials on this, and I thought what I'd do is rattle through a short presentation. I'm going to make it short. Put it that way. It's about 10 pages, but I'm going to make it short. The report is, this report is really on the initiatives to make possible more timely passenger service between Chicago and Lake Forest and Lake County for those living and working here. First, I'm going to cover the so-called "Universal Crossover Switch," which is not a funding request being made at this time. The only ask that I'm going to ask council to consider this evening is making a $100,000 request, $50,000 in fiscal year 19, and $50,000 in fiscal year 20, to support a two-year Metra pilot study of adding morning and afternoon service on a pilot basis to the West Lake The City of Lake Forest, Lake County, Illinois, and Lake County Partners have been working together for many months to improve rail service to Central Lake County, to West Lake Forest Station. Given the fiscal challenges of the State of Illinois and frankly, the federal government, the only way this is really going to happen over the next several years is through a private-public partnership, which I and others in the city, involved with the city, have become engaged in, particularly with a number of corporations in the area where it's an enormous challenge for them currently to get employees from the city to work out in Lake County, mainly because there is absolutely no afternoon service from West Lake Forest back into the city, which is to say, if you can't get home in the afternoon, who's going to use it in the morning coming out from the city? So it's quite a chicken and egg. However, Metra, after a lot of discussion, and I think frankly, being convinced by Lake Forest residents, myself, city staff, and corporations and institutions in the area, is willing to step forward and participate in funding a pilot study about adding additional service, and if they get adequate ridership, they will make this permanent with follow-on enhancements through the years with, once a universal crossover switch, positive train control, and some other things occur on the rail line. So, next slide. I want to first talk about the universal switch. The universal switch, which would be installed just north of Lake Forest Station, probably in a timeline of about two years from now, two to three years, would cost $4.75 million. And the public-private partnership aspect of this is that approximately $2 million of it would be paid by public bodies, Metra, Lake County, Lake Forest, CP, Rail, and hopefully something from IDOT and RTA. And then local area businesses who stand to benefit from the new rail service would contribute approximately $2.7 million of the remaining cost because of the value add of that for having the necessary human capital they require to access their places of employment up here in Lake County. And, next page. This, there's sort of three parts in the long run for enhancing passenger service to Lake Forest and to Central Lake County. The first step is going to be this pilot study, which would be improved services from Chicag-- between Chicago and Lake County, limited to just Lake County stops, in the first quarter, starting up in January. In the medium term, when as and if that pilot study, and let me repeat that, when as and if the pilot study shows the warrants through ridership, where Metra would make permanent additional trains and scheduled frequency, that a universal switch would be placed in Lake Forest to make this possible. During the term of the pilot study, Metra will be undergoing a somewhat expensive and operationally difficult process of having Northbound trains that would stop at Deerfield normally and go back into the city will cross over on a universal switch at Deerfield and run north on the inbound track up to Lake Forest, pick up passengers, and go in. So obviously, this ties up the rails and so forth, but they're willing to make this operational commitment and the costs involved to test the ridership. And this is an important step for corporations, for a public-private partnership to work well with a number of different parties, both on the public side and the private side, is we've got to have proof in the pudding. And the pilot study is intended to do that. Now, it's a two-year study, however, many involved think that we'll know in less than a year whether this will work, and there's a lot of expectation that it will be. And then the third and longer-term enhancement to passenger service to Lake Forest is for Lake Forest to become a stop on the Amtrak Hiawatha inter-city service run by Amtrak between Milwaukee and Chicago, but this is some years out. It awaits the underpass design, engineering, costing, and then standing in line to get the funding for that. Next chart is a little too busy on a Monday night. That's, just shows the challenges with the blank out there with the red of afternoon schedule going inbound. Let's go to the next slide. One of the things that I've come to learn, I guess I've known this to a certain extent before I became mayor, but becoming mayor and getting around to all of the many parts of Lake Forest and its many constituents more closely, I've come to learn that Central Lakes, Central Lake County, the center of which, with respect to employment, is really the tri-state tollway and Route 60 in Lake Forest, is the greatest job story for the next 10 or 15 years in the state of Illinois. And it's led by some over 30 industry-leading companies, including AbbVie, Abbott, Brunswick, Grainger, Horizon Pharma, Pacti, Pfizer, Reynolds, Tenneco, and the list goes on and on. There's 240,000 employees within a five-mile radius of West Lake Forest Station, and many of these firms estimate in the next 10 to 20 years that some 15% to 30% of their future new hires will have to come from the urban core of Chicago. And driving's really not an option, particularly when you consider that millennials really look for lots of reasons not to own a car. And so, new and improved rail service will make it a lot easier to recruit and retain talented employees who want to live in Chicago. So to be clear about what's going on here is that there very much is a Silicon Valley-type effect in the life sciences. I-94, starting at Lake Cook Road with Baxter and other firms there, and going right up through Abbott and North Chicago and even further north, has become truly the life sciences corridor. And AbbVie, just to pick one, has some 11,000 employees in the county and looks over the next 10 to 20 years of hiring a few thousand more, as do these other large employers. Next page. I know you've all wanted to know what a universal crossover switch looks like, so somebody took out their train set and put these switches together. I wish I'd thought of this sooner, but there it is, and I'll let you in your own imagination figure out how that makes, increases the, the engineering term is fluidity in a two-track system, where you can move trains from one track to the other using signals and other things to control them, to improve the operational efficiency and throughput. Next slide. What we're really dealing with here tonight is the pilot program, and Metra's committed to what potentially could be a two-year program, as I mentioned, starting in January. And the annual cost to operate the pilot service is $700,000 to be split equally between Metra and the Lake County Partnership. And the Lake Forest share to this would be $50,000 in 19 and $50,000 in fiscal '20, which is to say, if the pilot program is successful and no other outside funding is obtained, and this pilot study works, Lake Forest would be asked, a future council would be asked, to contribute as much as $400,000 in fiscal year 2021 for its share of a universal crossover. And last page, it's a win-win-win for all, in that Lake Forest businesses and institutions, such as our hospital and all our educational institutions in town, win greatly increased ability to recruit top talent, improve work-life balance for employees, and of course, it's sustainable. It's a green thing to be using mass transportation. And all, and Lake Forest and other local communities win. It's approved rail service for residents. If, you know, the biggest one probably is access to evening life in the city, to have dinner, go to the theater, or whatever. You know, you're somewhat from certain, well, certainly West Lake Forest, you're almost driven to Drive Down, which is no treat on inbound rush hour. Long run, it will improve home values and make Lake Forest an improved place to live and work, as well as all of southeast Lake County wins, with increased competitive advantage and economic activity. There's two gentlemen in the crowd this evening that I'd love to come up and just add their perspectives on this. One is Russ Garrich, who's the head of all, I'm going to butcher this, Russ, but head of all general services for AbbVie in Lake County, which means he's providing a home and transportation and whatnot for some 11,000 employees, and Kevin Constanine, who's the executive director of the Lake County Partners. So, Russ, Kevin, however you want to do this.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, it's a pleasure to be here with you again. And building on what the mayor said and just sort of enhancing the importance of this project, you know, if you talk to any business in Lake County or Chicagoland, or frankly, these days nationwide, and ask them what their number-one challenge is, they will all unequivocally say finding qualified talent. In many places in Lake County, that's a discussion about building a pipeline of welders and machinists and technicians, but here in Lake Forest, you have arguably the most significant corporate cluster in northern Illinois and potentially even statewide. So for those corporate residents, that's a discussion about attracting young professionals who live downtown to work out here. That is predominantly a transportation issue, and that's what we're trying to solve. We've got a great asset with the Milwaukee District North Line and the West Lake Forest, the Telegraph Road Station. We just need to maximize it. And the system was built, and the rail system was designed to get people who live out here to work downtown, and it really didn't conceive the reverse. But that's the situation that we're in now, and actually, that's the tremendous opportunity. So we need to make it easier for our corporations in order to grow. We need to make it easier for those folks living down there to work out here. And of course, our hope is, and frankly, we all know, that for many of those folks living downtown, that at some point, life kicks in, right? And that families start to form, and then suddenly, the suburbs look pretty good. And obviously, we want them to choose Lake Forest and the communities around here when they do decide to settle, and this is a great way to start that conversation. So we really appreciate the support and all the work that the mayor and Bob and the rest of the staff have given over the last number of months, actually, longer than that, and we appreciate your considering this opportunity tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, and council members, for the opportunity to provide you an update from an employer's perspective. I have spoken earlier to you, and honored to be back to talk tonight. I am Russ Garrich. I am our Vice President of Central Services. I appreciate any promotion you can get me there, Bob, but I do have responsibility for all our global facilities, all global environmental health and safety, and basically anything that is needed on a day-to-day operation for AbbVie here in Lake County. That does include shuttle bus operations, which is a key element of what we're talking about for commuters, because not only do you have the train rides that you need to have, but you've got to get people to and from their place of employment. In short, my role at AbbVie is to make AbbVie a great place to work. I think what we're talking about tonight is a key element that's going to help support us for the future. What I can tell you is that talent acquisition, talent retention, commuting, work-life balance are all key elements of how we want to make AbbVie a great place to work. I can confirm to the council members that AbbVie is a committed sponsor to this pilot and universal crossover switch as well. We recognize that public-private relationship, and I think that's a key element of what I'd like to stress going forward. The pilot program and crossover switch make an immediate positive impact for AbbVie and its over 11,000 employees and contractors. The infrastructure we have in Lake County today for rail and transportation is simply inadequate for current needs, yet alone future needs that we're talking about for both employers and for residents. This pilot, this pilot program shares the burden of the investment across all parties. The public-private partnership is today unique in what we would consider these programs. You don't find that cooperation in many places in the world today. It reflects a collaboration of governments such as Metra, local communities like Lake Forest, and employers like AbbVie to join together to drive changes that impact both employers, residents, and other people of the community. Without this program or others like it, really, the likelihood of any transformative transportation changes in Lake County are slim to none, and we really don't see changes coming without this type of idea going forward. I hear firsthand from our employees the challenges that commuting and transportation have. I'm going to try to give you a few of those examples. First, culture and employee engagement for AbbVie really tells us that we have much lower work-life balance, you know, challenges with people who commute. That's a big deal for us. Many tell us in our survey that if we didn't have our shuttle programs and some of the transportation today, they wouldn't choose AbbVie as an employment partner. Today, it's common for riders to have a 90- to 120-minute commute from door to door. If we have this type of program in place, we could shave 30 minutes off of that. That's impactful. That's changing people's commute. That really makes a transformative difference. Those are the type of things that I think we can get out of this. Second, many residents of Lake Forest are AbbVie employees. I can tell you, I've recently hired a new employee. He's the head of our environmental health and safety team, was working in Ireland for AbbVie. The public-private partnership is today unique, and what we would consider these programs, you don't find that cooperation in many places in the world today. It reflects a collaboration of governments such as Metro, local communities like Lake Forest, and employers like AbbVie, to join together to drive changes that impact both employers, residents, and other people of the community. Without this program or others like it, really, the likelihood of any transformative transportation changes in Lake County are slim to none, and we really don't see changes coming without this type of idea going forward. I hear firsthand from our employees the challenges that commuting and transportation have. I'm going to try to give you a few of those examples. First, culture and employee engagement for AbbVie really tells us that we have much lower work-life balance, you know, challenges with people who commute. That's a big deal for us. Many tell us in our survey that if we didn't have our shuttle programs and some of the transportation today, they wouldn't choose AbbVie as an employment partner. Today, it's common for riders to have a ninety to a hundred-and-twenty-minute commute from door to door. If we have this type of program in place, we could shave thirty minutes off of that. That's impactful. That's changing people's commute. That really makes a transformative difference. Those are the type of things that I think we can get out of this. Second, many residents of Lake Forest are AbbVie employees. I can tell you, I've recently hired a new employee. He's the head of our environmental health and safety team, was working in Ireland for AbbVie, were repatriating him back to Lake County, and he will be relocating his family back in October. He has chosen Lake Forest for his residency. He also has a Dutch wife, that honestly is a bit timid and scared of driving in Chicago. I'm scared of driving in Chicago, in particularly big cities. The rail system is a huge culture attraction to those type of families. That alone is, you know, she's not alone in that thinking. That's an attraction for the millennials, for the younger generation, as Bob described. These schedule enhancements are needed for just the communities, employers, and residents to make these changes. With the changes being proposed, you can actually get from Lake Forest to Union Station in roughly forty-six minutes during rush hour. All right? Bob, you talked about a play or a special dinner. That's making reality happen versus a wish that we have today and how that would be occurring. Thirdly, I chair what's called our Operations Development Program in AbbVie. This is a key program designed to recruit the absolute best talent out of our universities into our operations environment, and expand these roles into future leadership roles. So it's a fast-track program to recruit the best and brightest, scientists, engineers, pharmacists, people that really make a remarkable impact for patients in our AbbVie journey. It's a pool of roughly thirty to forty candidates. What I can tell you is that every one of these lives outside of Lake County and commutes via train. That's the trend that you see in the generation coming forward, all right? We must be proactive to assure we attract this key talent. If we choose to be stagnant with the changes in our infrastructure, then we choose to accept mediocrity that will come with it. Finally, acquiring the top IT talent is a challenge for us today. I've been working with an IT director that supports all my functional areas. He was recruiting a key talent that lived in Chicago for an open position. Position was great, but commute was not. He did not join AbbVie. That's a major challenge for us in how we go forward. That's the real-life scenario, that these changes that are being proposed will make a difference and make a positive impact to us as an employer, and obviously, to the commuters that have this. I think it's these examples of why AbbVie is committed to partner with this program. The costs and benefits are shared by public and private entities. I view the cost really as a down payment for an investment for future successes. I don't like the word "cost," I like the word "investment." I encourage, obviously, the council to support this program, and obviously, AbbVie is a hundred percent behind it. So thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Truly an on-the-ground perspective of the benefits of a rail project, both for employers and our institutions and schools here in the area, as well as for residents. Thank you very much. Any questions about the materials presented, the idea? We have a, there's a donor agreement that's been negotiated with the county that is obligating the city, and that's what I would ask for approval for, is for a hundred thousand dollars for the pilot program to be spent over two fiscal years, and just conceptual, but not final approval of four hundred thousand dollars, but only after, like, a future Lake Forest City Council has duly approved such expenditure following the receipt of the findings of the first phase of the project and other appropriate considerations. We need some forward planning, you know, kinds of considerations here to, because, to get everybody to act in concert towards this end. So, any particular questions?
Mr. Mayor, as I mentioned, I do have some questions, if I may proceed. But first, some comments. You know, you make a very good presentation, development, successful development in Lake County, the success of firms like AbbVie is something that we certainly do support and want to see, you know, occur, better commuter system. But the one area I do struggle with, and I'll get to that a little later, is, you know, how much we participate. In other words, how much do we ask our taxpayers, our citizens, to contribute to this effort? But let me ask some questions. I did go through the donor agreement, and that seems to refer to a grant agreement, that the way I interpret that document is really the way it will operate, assuming the funding comes in. Is that a correct understanding on this grant agreement?
That is correct. There's going to be actually an agreement between us and Lake County Partners, which is before you tonight, but there is a separate agreement between Lake County Partners and Metro on the program, and then ultimately, if we move forward with the universal crossover.
In a way, it goes to the next concern. You know, to the extent we invest, using the word "invest," I don't mind using that, you want to know what the bang is for the buck, what you're getting for it. And right now, it's very vague, and we talk about improved rail service. And I guess the one specific, and that goes to something that was shared by the mayor, the pilot program, where the way I read it, you know, we have that so-called gap period, and one of the trains we're going to move to be a later time and express, and we're going to add one train. So we are adding one train to that gap, but that seems to be the pilot program, and, you know, I'm not sure that's defined, or defined, you know, what we're expecting, what we're requiring of Metro from a commitment standpoint, you know, assuming the investment is made. And, you know, I don't know whether that will be defined. In terms of dollars and cents, the donor agreement also talks about a, what was it, a six-point-three-million-dollar number? And I'm not sure where you got that six-point-three. If we got four-point-seven, and if we add, you know, seven hundred thousand for the pilot, I come up nine hundred thousand dollars short of that. Could someone explain that discrepancy, sort of, in the numbers?
Certainly. A lot of questions there. Let me try and take them in order. The second, let me start with your last question first. Where the six-point-three-million number comes from is, it's seven hundred thousand dollars a year, so it's actually one-point-four-million dollars, half of which is coming from Metro, and half of it is coming from the other communities. And then on top of that is administrative legal costs that Lake County Partners would have as a part of administering this whole program. Again, those are unknown numbers until we get forward, or get further into the program.
On that point, just to be clear, so the pilot program is a seven hundred thousand dollar per year, times two, a total of one, because I remember it was divided by half and three-fifty, but that was dividing between the public and private sector, I guess, in terms of the funding.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so when you take a look at the total, I think to your second question, the city's commitment, if the, I'll call it the worst-case scenario, that would roughly be five hundred thousand dollars, or slightly less than ten percent of the total project, would be the city's commitment to this project. Of that, though, and I think it was put in the write-up, is, we've already had some conversations with our state representatives about possibly including this in a future capital bill, and I know that the corporations are as interested, and Metro is interested as we are. So collectively, we will work to see if that can happen, because if that does happen, it obviously brings everybody's contribution down considerably.
Although, to the extent that you have people that have signed in, signed up for contributions, is that a disincentive to the legislator to feel that they need to step forward for legislative funds, recognizing the earlier comment, that there's not a lot of money in the state of Illinois?
Well, actually, it's just the opposite. When we talked to Senator Julie Morrison, she loved the idea of the public-private partnership, because she might say, I might not be able to get you six-point-three million or four-point-seven million, but I could go down there and say, I can maybe get you three, if you guys can come up with the one-point-seven. Because she says that she's anticipating that a lot of the asks that they are going to be getting as a part of the capital bill are not coming with any matching funds. And so thereby, including the matching funds, you sort of go to the top of the list.
Well, and then, we've heard from many experienced observers that, for federal monies, that may or may not be involved in this, if not directly from, or perhaps through IDOT, is that the more you can have a local contribution approach, even exceed fifty percent, it decidedly moves you up the list. So in terms of, you know, shall we wait another ten years and see if this works? Or if you're a corporation, or a whole team of local parties, businesses, communities, and so forth, get together, each put a little bit in, we can get close to that fifty percent and move this thing forward and improve the quality of life for Lake Foresters and all the other benefits. So it's just sort of the way grants and whatnot are done these days, because most public bodies are out of money.
Of course, it does lead up to the second question, or another question I had, is what commitments do we have? I know AbbVie said they're willing to participate. You know, can we put it in numbers? Are we, you know, close to the goal, or are we far short? I know you're looking for the donor agreement with Lake Forest. I think to help your effort, you have that clause saying that, you know, it's to be used to help deal with other local communities. But at this juncture, do we have other local governments or other entities that have committed under a donor agreement at this stage?
We have a number of both governmental agencies, as well as corporations, that have indicated an interest to cooperate and to collaborate. The problem is, their first question is, what is Lake Forest putting up? And so it's sort of the chicken and the egg, because even the county has indicated a willingness to participate, but they don't want to be the first money in, they'd rather be the last money in. And so unfortunately, somebody has to be first one in the pool. AbbVie fortunately was the first one.
It's committed to be the first.
That's right. They're the first, and we're basically asking the second.
And the real answer to your question, at the end of the day, the city of Lake Forest will spend zero dollars unless all the necessary money is raised at a closing.
Right. Well, that's part of, you know, whether, how optimistic are we that we can achieve this? And obviously, you're saying, to the extent Lake Forest can participate in this way, that would help the process.
Right.
Coming back to the breakdown in the dollars and the allocation, division of cost, there was a reference that if we divide up the six-point-three, with three-point-six million being private, the remaining two-point-seven million would be divided between transit agencies at one-point-seven and local governments at one-point-oh. And that's the division of the six-point-three, I think, the total ball of wax, other than the pilot program.
No, that includes a pilot program.
Includes a pilot program. But if we're saying that that division is local governments is one point, one million, one-point-oh million, and we're going to be putting in five-hundred-plus-fifty-fifty, I'm four-hundred-fifty-fifty, that's five-hundred thousand. So from a local government standpoint, is it my understanding that we're saying that Lake Forest would contribute one-half from that governmental, local governmental segment?
Not, well, potentially, but we have asked a number of municipalities to participate. But keep in mind, some of them will benefit by the schedule changes that we're talking about here, because it will be enhanced service to other stations in Lake County. Some of them will not benefit at all by the universal crossover, which will be more uniquely benefiting to the Lake Forest Telegraph Road Station. So while we're sort of, and then this is part of the problem, is, we are going to hopefully raise more money than we need, and so proportionally, everybody will pay less.
You're optimistic.
Yeah, and that's, ultimately, we won't know until we get further down the road. But very candidly, until Lake Forest commits, everybody else is on the sideline, because I think the feeling is, if Lake Forest isn't willing to throw money into this, why would I?
But it does go back to that earlier slide, where you talk about, in Lake County, we have two hundred, around two-hundred-forty thousand employees in a five-mile radius. Now, if you break that down, you know, how many are on Lake Forest versus how many outside of Lake Forest, it's not a fifty-fifty split there. So the benefit does go far beyond our boundaries. And to that extent, you know, it is important that, you know, we don't carry the full burden, at least that'd be my opinion.
Correct.
On that. This is a question for AbbVie. Currently, you do bus people. I take it you bus them, whether to Deerfield, where in the so-called gap period, my looking at their schedule, they've got like four trains that do the reverse at Deerfield and head back into the city. Is Deerfield one of the places where you do currently bus folks to?
It is. We catch the four-forty-seven out of Deerfield today, or the equivalent, I think. That's from an AbbVie, especially from our facility.
Would you just do one trip to the Deerfield station, or multiple, considering they have multiple trains?
We have today two routes, two stops that go to Deerfield in the afternoon, because we can't go to, we don't have a Lake Forest stop.
Okay. Well, and then that brings up the UP line on the east side. We're there, looking at the schedule, they have three trains in the so-called gap period from, whether it's the East Lake Forest Train Station or the Fort Sheridan Train Station. Do you do any busing to those sites?
We bus to seven different stops. We go to Deerfield, Libertyville, North Chicago, Lake Bluff, Lake Forest, east-west, you know, so we cover almost everywhere.
You have a regular bus service, then?
We have sixteen buses that we operate.
Okay. And you feel this, a stop at West Lake Forest would significantly help?
We've done surveys with our employees, so, you know, we actually have a lot of data today. So today, when you get on a bus that goes to AbbVie, we require you to badge in. So we have technology that can track our ridership, our data. We have pilot groups that actually are very voiceful in, you know, what they want, and more internet, and better heating stations at every stop on their lines. So we know what the employees are telling us, and this was the number-one request, is express service to fill that gap. Not just service, express service, and that's what's being provided. As I said, you know, we can get downtown in almost forty, I think it was forty-six, forty-eight minutes, with the five-oh-nine that's being.
No, I think we all recognize that we do have a service here in Lake County, and then here in Lake Forest, too. And to some extent, I used to think we have good service, but can it be better? Yes, it can be better.
Yeah. But one of the other things, from an employer perspective, that's really critical, is, like, if we have to catch that Deerfield stop earlier, I can have employees that can't work to five o'clock, right? So there's a, there's that element of, you know, you work from eight to five kind of thing, and people leave early. You know, now, if they have a five-oh-nine or a five-thirty, they can stay for four to four o'clock meetings that go to five o'clock, and still catch that train home. You know, so there's a, not only is it the commuting, but there's a benefit, again, to us as employers, for them to get the maximum out of their day job, if you call it that.
And the flexibility helps, no question.
Absolutely, correct.
The days and the type of work environment, you can do from nine to five, especially in corporate headquarters, is quite rare.
Correct.
I appreciate that.
No doubt.
I guess one other comment I had is, this coming before the council at this stage, it went in our material on Friday night, or Friday afternoon, and I've spent some time going through it and trying to better understand it. But I guess I would encourage us, afford our, the citizens, an opportunity to provide input on this, because even though we're asking for the fifty thousand dollars the first year, fifty thousand the second, it does come with that tag-on four hundred thousand. And it's not clear how much of that is subject to, you know, discretion by the council, or whether it's something that is fait accompli, if you come in with a successful pilot program. But I would like to encourage that we give our citizens an opportunity to provide any feedback they want before we actually have a vote on this resolution.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of questions, and I'm not, I guess, Mayor, maybe Mayor Lansing, I'll direct these at you first. We do a lot of public-private partnerships in Lake Forest, and we're actually involved in a couple at the moment. I'm just curious about the piece of this that would include, I'm guessing it's mostly corporations that would be using, such as AbbVie and the other, but I just, I just need that reassurance. Is that correct? Am I presuming correctly? Yeah, okay. I just, because one of the things you don't ever want to do is be competing with yourself on these things, if you can avoid it.
Right.
Then the other thing, I think I heard, and I can't remember which of you gentlemen used the phrase, I believe I heard "unique," and I'm guessing that this is not necessarily a common way to do this kind of thing, and we're always happy in Lake Forest to do things a little bit differently. But I was going to ask about sort of precedence. Are there other precedents of how this has worked, and maybe not? I mean, maybe we're the precedent, but is that correct?
Well, if I understand the question, as I said before, in other contexts, I must say, in forty years of sort of being in the economic geography business, I've never known improved rail service, passenger service, to have hurt a community. It just doesn't, you know? It opens you up to a larger world, and access for better employees to work in your town, more and better employees potentially, and for citizens to access other parts of the region.
It's the doing it this way, I guess.
Well, and then the public-private partnership, yeah. I'm sure there's a lot of big station projects, you know, with local content, and a lot of grants in recent years across. grants in recent years across the government spectrum have had increasing requirements for local participation. We're kind of jumping ahead of it a little bit. It's not a Lake Forest thing so much, but the numbers for employers, for the hospital, for Lake Forest College, for so many actors and these large corporations, it's so compelling. So let's say the average person they might hire salary plus benefits from the city is $100,000. And they're gonna, it's gonna be 15% of X hundred people. So let's say it's, you know, 100 people they're gonna hire this year that have to come up from the city. You know, that's what, is it 10 million? You know, it's a big amount of money and that's just one year. So you're 10 years, you know, it's 100 million. And it's an existential thing. If you don't have the afternoon service, they don't take the train out in the morning. And it's accessing human capital is going to execute their business plan. It's going to allow Lake Foresters and West Lake Forest to go to the theater and go to dinners and participate in nightlife downtown that's effectively kind of blocked for or very awkward, very time consuming. So it's a very compelling financial equation for corporations to support this, to really get into the nitty gritty of it. I mean, it's, we're talking about peanuts measured over a 10 or 20-year period of the human capital costs that they seek to expend.
I think Alderman Biedler, to answer your question, Metra would also see this as very unique. Metra is not unlike the city of Lake Forest that it's got more projects than it has money for. And, you know, when we were talking to them early on about this concept of a universal crossover, which they very much want because of, as the mayor indicated, this operational fluidity. But they're saying that we have to prioritize this to maybe 125 other projects that we have on all of the multiple lines that we have, and usually, public safety comes first. And so not unlike sort of our tree replacement program where if you want to have the city pay for it 100%, you'll be on the list until we get to you. Or you can contribute in a public-private partnership like this and you can move to the top of the list. And I think Metra, which actually has this on their agenda on October 12th at their meeting to talk about, they see this potentially as a new way of attacking some of the major capital improvements that they have on their systems throughout the Chicago area.
So just to drill down a teeny bit further, the case is being well made, but I'm just, so the universal crossover that exists in just, in Deerfield or just north of Deerfield would not have been funded this way? Is that correct? It would have been funded a more traditional way by Metra out of its capital funds whenever it could afford it?
Correct. Yeah, the last universal.
I'm guessing a while, sure.
Well, and I think last I heard, they installed one north of Highland Park within the last two years, but they have been planning for it for over 10 years.
Okay. And that was funded by?
Metra.
By Metra?
Right.
Okay, okay, okay. So it's, if we were willing to wait a really long time, which doesn't sound ideal for what we're trying to, what we're trying to do right now, but that's the alternative to how to get this.
That is right.
Could I say something, Mr. Mayor? You know, there's an incredible amount of positive incentives here, but there are some negatives if we don't do this. Okay? Boeing came here, they moved downtown. McDonald's just moved downtown. Kraft Heinz moved downtown. Takeda is moving to Boston and taking Shire with it. If we don't do this, if we don't support this business community, which pays, I think, about $6.5 million of our property taxes, it's going to go away. It's going to take the jobs with it. It's going to reduce our home values, which are struggling right now. We need to do this for, not only for positive purposes, but for defensive purposes. We need to get behind this Conway Farms industrial community, which also, you know, Granger and whatever, I think Walgreens, did I mention Walgreens?
No, you missed Walgreens. I said it to prove.
Walgreens is going downtown. I mean, we better, we better wake up and start paying attention, for goodness sakes. So I would like to call the question, if that's possible, and get this thing behind us right now so we can begin to move forward.
Can I just ask one thing? And I support this, but I think it would be interesting, I don't know if Metra can do it in the process of the study, but I'd like to come out of this with a count of how many Lake Forest residents use this service in the reverse commute going down to the city, just so that we can document the actual trips.
That's an interesting question. I'm not sure how easy it is. Metra's going to have a very large statistical framework on this thing. So for example, robbing Peter to pay Paul, you know, numbers using the North Line, getting off of Deerfield, is their actual growth over the term of the pilot study. The source of those people.
I don't know if they can break it down.
Can't quite do it the way Abbe does it, but.
We can do it by station. This is what we've been told. Metra can do it by station, who's getting on, who's getting off. But I think they would have to ask everybody stepping on the train where, from their zip code, and I think that.
Maybe they could do it for a period of time, because they do do surveys, rider surveys. Maybe they could do it for a period of time and extrapolate from that.
I'll bring that up with Metra because they, I was glazing over, they have such a huge statistical plan to really measure this. You know, with regard to the comment about waiting and digesting, you know, the pilot program is exactly what it is. It's a fact gathering exercise. It's the ultimate source of information and data. And for a relatively modest amount of money and the willingness of all the parties to contribute, I do think we should move forward now with this. There is a separate final decision about the 400,000. And again, it's couched on a lot of different things. It only gets spent if the pilot program is successful and then everybody else plays their part. Lake Forest is not going to get hung out there by itself.
Yeah, I'm a strong supporter of this as well. But for the city manager, have we gotten any feedback from the community? I mean, I have not personally, but I'm wondering if we have gotten any positive, negative feedback on this?
I can't say specifically with respect to this. I will tell you though, that when we did similar, like the reverse commute on the UP North Line, the response was overwhelmingly positive. What we didn't realize was how many people wanted to take the 530 train into the city. So then that's what was beneficial to Metra was that they not only picked up the new riders coming out in the morning, but they've also picked up ones going in as well. But I think in general, Alderman, what we have heard from our residents is better, faster commuter service, they're very much supportive of.
So all this said, I will ask for approval of a contribution agreement with Lake County Partners regarding the establishment of a pilot program and installation of a universal crossover on the Milwaukee District North Line in substantially the form of the contribution agreement that you have before you.
So moved.
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor, would you like public comment?
What's that?
Would you like any public comment on this stuff?
Oh, please. Public comment on this matter? Russ and Kevin, why don't you, so you can sit down.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
He was dismissing.
Good evening. My name is Rami Lopez. I live at 410 East Woodland Road. I am not representing myself. I have a neighbor that's watching on TV. So she asked me if I could ask some questions. Thank you. One, maybe I can shoot these out and get answers for the benefit. Is this, would this track crossover be linked to a third track?
No.
Where would this be located?
Right now, it's scheduled to be south of 60 and north of the Telegraph Road Train Station.
Okay.
But it hasn't been engineered at this point in time, but it's somewhere in that vicinity.
Would this be used by freighters?
No. Well, I shouldn't say that because part of the idea of having a universal crossover is if they're working on tracks, they can move trains, whether it's Amtrak, Metro, or freight, from one track to another. So potentially, yes.
Right. To me, it seems obvious that they would be moving freight and passengers.
Potentially depending on if there's maintenance being done on the track.
Oh, only in the case of maintenance?
I believe that's the case, yes.
Okay. Would there, what are their towns, but we just got an answer to that? Would there be, would there need to be an increase in parking lots at Telegraph? That's a good question.
An increase in parking? No, as a matter of fact, right now, we probably have excess parking available ever since they opened up the North Central Line. But as Mr. Garrick talked about, most of these employees are getting on shuttles and they're not driving to the stations. The only additional traffic would be our residents who are taking those 509 or the 517, or 517 trains into the city.
Okay. Where in the budget does this come from or what is the budget trade-off?
We'll be talking about that more later on tonight.
Yeah. Well, there's obviously a lot of calls on capital. It's a matter of priorities. It's $50,000 a year over the next, this and the next fiscal year.
It's a capital project.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. How did the crossover benefit Highland Park and Deerfield? And he wanted to know specifically about Deerfield losing employee, employers. They had the crossover. Has anyone figured out, you just?
I'm not sure we can answer for Highland Park or Deerfield what the impact has been.
Yeah.
Has anyone talked to Highland Park or Deerfield?
My wife and I drive down to Highland Park to get the, what is it, the 550?
22.
522 that gets to Chicago.
610.
610. And it's absolutely wonderful.
And Deerfield's had their crossover.
And so that's how, you know, in the evenings, when we're going downtown for the theater or whatever, that's how we get there.
Okay, so we have the anecdotes, but no one's actually talked to those towns?
Well, Metra's got a lot of information on these things.
I don't know that the towns would know themselves. It's probably a Metra question, which is similar to the one I just asked about riders.
One thing we'll do during the courses, path studies, get the Metra folks out here to talk about what's going on, what they're seeing and all that. They're very good at communicating.
So if I can speak for this person, I think they're looking for that.
If you want to forward the.
What happened to the investment? Was it an investment?
Yeah. Well, if you want to forward those questions, we can send some of them down to Metra and see if they can answer them because as I indicated, while the one in Highland Park's been within the last two years, the one in Deerfield has been there multiple, multiple years. So I'm not sure of what information they have, but if you send it to us, we can ask Metra to respond.
Okey doke. Thank you very much for the questions and answers.
Any other questions on this particular item? Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, if I could follow up on a comment that was made in this last bit of dialogue. On the EA and the universal crossover that's been discussed there, they've always referred to it as being north of the Telegraph Road Station. And I think that was one of the questions. Without getting specific to the exact footage of where it is located, is this one that's being proposed pretty much in the same location as the one that is contemplated under the environmental assessment?
I can't answer directly because I haven't seen the final EA. I know what the draft looked like. And it was closer to Conway Road. And in our conversations with Metra, we are trying to encourage them to move it further north so it's adjacent to the Compost Center.
Okay. And in a way, it goes to the other question. Even though it's designed for a two-track operation, would it lend itself if EA goes forward, if it does add a third rail holding track in Lake Forest? Could it be utilized for that purpose by expanding the universal crossover?
Not that I'm aware of because this only connects two tracks. So if you add a third track, you would have to come in with another.
Another switching setup.
Another switching system. But that's a Metra question. I don't think I'm in a position to answer that.
Okay.
Add that to the Metra list for Rami.
Yeah.
Back to a roll call.
Alderman Biedler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Because I would have preferred to give the residents an opportunity to comment, I'll vote nay.
Very good. Six yea, one nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is comments by the city manager.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. First, I would like to, for the record, congratulate Alderman Newman on his first hole-in-one.
Still trying to get that drink.
That's right. I'm hoping that the tab stays up longer.
Wait a moment. Where did that happen, Alderman Newman?
Deer Path Golf Course.
Deer Path Golf Course. In the midst of its new refurbishments and all.
Wonderful conditions at the course.
That's right.
Well, gratitude could lead to a new contribution.
That's right. The second item I wanted to bring forward this evening, at the September 17 workshop meeting, when the city council was looking at a number of capital projects, many capital projects that are facing us as a community, many of which we don't have current funding available for. One of the projects that we talked about was our, one of our beloved facilities in town, the library. This evening, we're fortunate to have Catherine Lemer here, who's going to talk about the work that the library board has done to date. And I guess let us peek under the tent in terms of some of the challenges that the library board has going forward with respect to renovations. So Catherine?
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council for welcoming here this evening. So I'm going to just tell you right up front that I'm not a very flowery person. I live this every day, so I'm going to try very hard to stay out of the weeds. But if I, my funny accent and I start talking too fast, just slow me down and I will fill in any of the gaps.
Lift out of the weeds. That'll be the signal.
All right. I'll watch for that. So what's going on with that dome? We, at the library, about a year and a half ago, got a bid to repair the dome. And by bid, I mean a number that was a little eye-boggling for us because it was about $400,000, $300,000 to replace the dome part and another $100,000 on the substructure. And that's already a year old and that was a very preliminary estimate. So before we dived in to spend, you know, spend $400,000 on a, essentially a roof project, we took some time to look at what we've been spending on this building and would it be wise to stick another $400,000 in it? Right? Tried to make a fiscally responsible decision. So these are very rough numbers and I think one of the things we found with this building is that we never quite get ahead. Like right now, I have two elevator companies looking at our elevator because it's down. We are hearing numbers of $10,000 to $40,000 to get it in operation again, and it still will not be ADA compliant. So when we have a building like that, what we wanted to do was go out and sort of get some expert advice. So we brought in, we did the whole process and H RFP, we looked at a number of architectural firms and we hired HGA Inc. out of Milwaukee, a lot of experience with libraries, a lot of experience with public buildings, and said, here's your task. Look at this building from a library, look at its very important historic components, the feeling of this community to preserve those kinds of buildings. Tell us about our aging infrastructure that doesn't work. Tell us about everything. And then on top of that, here's a wish list from the community. Because in May of 2017, we did a community survey and we got a big wish list. So basically, we said to HGA, look at all of our problems and simultaneously tell us what we need to do to get to a 21st century library. And they came back to us with a first round of proposals. All of the proposals talked about additions. All of the proposals talked about additions, and the library board, pretty much out of the box, eliminated two of them. The first one was a, sort of the mass build, what would this piece of property hold? And we threw that one out, because it wasn't really true to the nature of this historic building. And that one came in at 22.6, and the other one we threw out immediately was a demolition of the existing building with a rebuild at 18.5. So we said to HGA, these are really big numbers, we didn't really anticipate them, can you go back and come back to us again? And so they came back with a second round of proposals, which was, first was to take off the existing north wing and expand it, because so many of our ADA compliance issues lay there. We have ramps and elevators and all kinds of other things, and that came back at 19.5. That adds 6,000 square feet to the library, which gives us all of the components that people in the community survey wanted, everything we would like to see. And we said, okay, what if we have to live within our current footprint? What can you give us if we have to live in our current footprint? And that one is a 12.9 million. So I know those numbers sound really big, right? Big numbers, right? But the reality is, is it's 7.6 just to fix everything that's wrong in the building. And, you know, a few years ago, the library spent about $10,000 upgrading LED fixtures, fixtures to LED, but we still have rooms that have only one electrical outlet that's not grounded. So we just, we're always constantly sort of fighting with the building when we want to do programs. And also, I just want to really clarify, these proposals do not compete with any of the partners that we work with. Like, we would never put an auditorium in this library, because when we have programs like that, we go over and we talk to Amy at Gorton, and we say, you have this space, can we partner? Because that's a big part of our game plan. And so just wanted to be clear about that. So just, this is, was a very preliminary site plan to let you know that we are also talking about how to increase the parking. Basically, we'll just reverse the traffic flow, save our trees. The mayor tells me he gets all kinds of calls about leaf blowers. I get a call every day about parking, and in particularly access for some of our aging population and handicap parking. So what this kind of does is, this kind of concept, this is not the, you know, final plan, but it ties us into that new McKinley development, their open green space. It gets us some parking. I would say the second question I get is, when am I going to put, you know, as if it's my choice. Ms. Lemer, when are you going to put that path back up the middle that was there when I was a child, the beautiful stately walk back up? So that unfortunately is, has another price tag on it, but, so we got a lot of information, and that's sort of, this is sort of the summary of what we've been doing for two years. We did the community survey, we got very high marks from the community, we took that information, we wrote a strategic plan and new mission, we're implementing that. We hired an architect, they came back with all these plans with big numbers, and so last month, we issued an RFP for a capital campaign consultant to help us understand what kind of philanthropic support is in the community for this project. We were interviewing four firms, we got a really good pool of candidates, we had 12 firms, national level ranked firms, we're bringing four in next week for interviews. So the timeline continues. Poor Bob, he always thinks I'm going to come here and have an answer. So, but these, this is what I tell my staff, and this is what I tell my board, is that we knew this was coming. Like, we knew this was a very long journey, and we have been positioning ourselves for success the day we started thinking about this, right? You know, financially, we've been very fiscally responsible with our budgets, we, our reporting is much more transparent, we're moderning expenses like we never did before, we're doing RFPs, we're doing all of these things because nobody wants to invest in a ship that's going down, or doesn't look properly managed. So we're doing very well on that. Operationally, we've done a whole bunch of other things, sort of align ourselves with similarly situated institutions, we took a hard look at benefits, we realigned some of those, and, and then from a community support, I mean, I tell my staff, we say yes, that's our, that's our out of the box response, yes. And sometimes it's just really crazy, boy, you reorganize the DVDs, and like, for, you know, people like you sit around and think, well, that doesn't seem like a very challenging thing or a very complicated thing. Sometimes it is, but we say yes all the time, and we get very good community response. And that, I would say to you is, if you're worried about putting your money in a sinking ship, we rank very high on a state level. I'm a very data-driven person, so these are our statistics against the other 658 libraries in the state that we're measured against, and I think the most telling ones are the reference transactions, and the fact that we rank sixth with library visits per capita. We are a high-touch concierge library. We, we try not only to say yes, but to make sure that people know they're welcome and that they should come back, so. Nationally, we continue to score very high nationally. We were awarded four stars again last year from the National Ranking Library Journal. We were also 19th in our category. There's 1,400 libraries in our category on a national level with budgets between one and five million, and we ranked 19th. So I'll just leave it with that. These are our annual statistics last year, we're continuing to outperform, and I can answer any questions. I know some of you have reached out to me already, and I really appreciate that for that personal looking after the library, so.
Any questions of our librarian?
Hey Catherine, I have a question, just as all of this has progressed. Can you just touch on some of the changes at the board or the governance level? Have you brought in just new board members? Do you have a subcommittee that is figuring out the strategy and the vision for the library, and how to engage the community? Or you can just talk about who's involved and how the governance is structured? I think that'd be helpful to all of us.
Sure, we have a nine-member board, they're elected by the caucus. We did not change any board members this year. We will lose two board members next year. I think the really good thing for us is that, particularly that, because people, we, it's been a very well-thought-out process. Like, my staff is like, why is this taking so long? Or why did we gear up and now we're at a plateau again? I said, because we're being very thoughtful. We're trying to examine every aspect of everything, but we function as really a committee of the whole right now with the nine board members. A number of members of the community have come forward and said that they would, when we get to that stage of really announcing a capital campaign, that they would be interested in sort of being our community committee.
Other question I had, it looks like 7.6 million to just repair, is that, is that right? Because there's this repair, then there's betterment, and there's transform, and, you know, I'm just curious, I was talking to someone today about just kind of challenges in general across the city, and being capital constraint, you know, there's always option one, two, and three. And so I'm just kind of curious if you could provide a bit more detail on, on, on the repair option, you know, because you have the dome that's around $400,000, and what's the other 7.6 million? And do you, I mean, do you think about it in stages? Like, you would do that first, and you would have a vision to transform later, and, you know, to do the capital campaign? Or, I'm just curious what the sequence of, that that would be, and if you could just describe the first step, which is repair, right, which is probably critical?
So I, it doesn't actually kind of shake out like that. So if we wanted to go with the 7.6 million, just repair, we may actually also have to go off-site for that, because that's, in all of our systems, we have five HVAC systems, some of those boilers are original, we don't have any ability to control the heat and air conditioning anywhere. So when they talk about repair or betterment, they're essentially punch, talking about punching through every wall to run new electrical, new plumbing, so it gets us no new space. We will get new carpeting if they have to rip up that room to lay something under it, no new furniture. So I think I give you that number really to say, that 12.6 and that 9.5 or 19, 19.5 numbers, it gets you, it gets you all of that nitty-gritty work done, but, so you're not really spending 20 million, because the first eight is just to get outlets in some of the rooms kind of thing.
So just specifically, if you had big buckets of the 7.6, what would you describe them as? Is it HVC and heating? It's electrical? I mean, just help us understand, decompose that number.
The dome, HVAC, which is most of it, new electrical, new, I don't know if this counts as tech, as electrical, but new technology wiring to some extent, and that will get you 7.6. And the murals, the murals are in that, in that budget, about 800,000 on the murals. That also counts, that also counts the site, you know, the reversal of the traffic and some of the new parking and that, that, this core kind of exterior work also comes with that, reversal of the traffic pattern and some parking.
What about the ADA stuff?
Right.
That's in that too?
ADA, ADA compliant.
So the required ADA things that you, yeah, that's big, that's got to be fairly big.
What, what would you, what would it cost if you abandoned the present building? Went to a green field, so to speak?
Eighteen-five.
And built the, a 21st century library?
That would be somewhere between 18 to 22 million. I think Deerfield, Deerland Library, which is 42, 42,000 square feet, and we're not approaching that yet at the $19 million number. I believe theirs was 21 or 22 million.
Assume, you know, our fiscal year begins May 1st, so I'm assuming this is a construction that would be in next fiscal year.
At the earliest.
And so it's conceivable it could cross two fiscal years.
I think, not, I think, you know, these are all very preliminary ideas that would, that makes sure we preserve the historic part of the building, because that's very important to members of this community, but the rest is still discussion with the community, right? I mean, you don't, don't just take a building like this and tell people what it's going to be, you know? You have a lot of discussions, and those discussions will take some time.
Maybe just a question, you know, in terms of timeline. So you've done this very preliminary work, and now looking at a fundraising capacity kind of thing and so forth. When do you think you would come set on an actual proposal? I mean, obviously, there's many determinants, including how much you can raise, the city's limited funds and all that sort of thing, but is this something even, I mean, to get done even in '19? I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of work to do here, a lot of visioning.
We, we expect to hear from the initial capital campaign, sort of test the waters, look to see what kind of funding is there. And then, you know, one of the things that we hired these architects about is they said, we can design for any budget. And so, you know, if we got a feeling back from the community, the philanthropic community, that there's this amount of money, the library has secured away about 2 million, and the friends have about a half, you know, you add it all up, and then it might be that that's what we know we have to, to build with, right? I think, and, for a community like this, the $19 million number is not extraordinary. Like, we're not talking about gold-laden fixtures, right? We are just talking about new spaces that are flexible, that will grow into the next century, because what, what happens with now is that we, we're, we don't really have any space for teens, right? That was the biggest hit we got on that survey, is like, once my children are in the fourth grade, there's nothing for them at this library, and that's really a space constraint. We can't make a space for them, because most of our shelving holds up another floor. So I think it's just a building that fights us in a lot of ways, and I don't think that this is the kind of community that wants a Deerfield library. It's a, I like, I like the Deerfield library, I truly enjoy the director, but it's, as one of my board members always says, it could be a Walmart, right? It's just a big box.
Let me ask a, maybe a deeper question, and, you know, we can't resolve all this tonight, but a leak occurred in the dome, and that seems to have kicked off a repair analysis that then became calling in architects to assist staff and the board. Is it too much to say, I mean, to envision what this library should look like in 20 or 30 years from now? Because this kind of work, or scale of work, involves that kind, those kinds of issues. And I, I'm just, is it a fair question that, are we cart before the horse here, and whether there really needs to be a step back here? I mean, we can survive looking at white plastic for a while, to really look.
At what you need.
At what a, a library in this, this torrential stream of technological change and everything that's going on in life, lifestyles, work, live, play equations, you know, all these things. What is the perceived wisdom from some real experts about what a library, you know, because a lot of this is, is almost akin to starting over again, those kinds of numbers. So just what is the library we envision, you know, frankly, for 30, 40 years from now, I think? Because these kinds of fixed capital improvements beg that question and analysis. And so I'm really wondering whether we, one thing the city could do is maybe help the library, put a team together to kind of really, really, you know, we'd be better off spending some time and money figuring it out best we can, I mean, there's a lot of guesstimates in all this, without getting into what an architect says we got to do.
So I had the pleasure, I've had the pleasure on a couple of occasions of meeting at the library in focus groups, and Catherine and I recently had a discussion, and I, I think it's a very interesting point, Mayor Lansing. I do think that this is often what happens in our own homes and our own lives, too. Something happens, and then you realize that, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty sure when you came, Catherine, you realized there were things that, that were not as you would wish them to be, and apparently, the ADA situation is one of those. I think probably many people in this room and watching on TV have gotten lost in stacks with, you're like, this doesn't make sense. Why is this, you know, and I've been there with, and I will say, I've been there on many happy occasions with grandchildren. I have not, I don't have middle schoolers yet, so as grandchildren, so I don't know that. But I can imagine, it feels to me as a, as a 40-plus-year resident of Lake Forest, that what the changes that have been come, have come, don't appear to have come as part of a long-term plan for the library, is we need this, and so let's add it on. And I think that's part of how some of this happened, we have to have a way for, you know, there has to be an elevator, and it, it's not, I think it's not logical, and I understand how you could have the, you know, certainly the dome's a critical element, and you could go, you know what, while, let's, let's, if we're going to have to do something, let's take a look and see what else. I can't imagine that you probably necessarily thought the scale was what it was, but you bring in people who know what they're talking about and say, okay, and you're Lake Forest, and we have to find someplace in between the things that have to be done, at least at some point in the future, and maybe figuring out, you know, how, how you make this happen. But I do think, this doesn't seem to me like the kind of dreaming that sometimes happens, and you're like, you know what would be nice? This sounds like, you know what we need. And I do know, this is, this is anecdotally, but I've gotten, because I'm involved in this Welcome Home campaign so deeply, I ask people all the time why they came to Lake Forest, and you would be absolutely amazed at how often people reference our library as part of that. Furthermore, when we did focus groups with Croya Kids about Furthermore, when we did focus groups with Croya Kids about why they love Lake Forest, the library was absolutely on that list, also sweets. But, you know, but the, but the point is kind of in the same breath, you know, kind of right next to each other. And so I feel like we, we need, we'll need to, we'll need to do, we'll need to help you do what you need to do. I think we're gonna need to be reassured. One thing I'm not seeing on here is how recently you did your various improvements. I think a timeline that shows us when stuff was done in kind of a little bit of a scattershot way, and you're talking about trying to clean that up. How can we face the next decades with something that's, that's up to date? And, but, but, because when I saw it, I remember when we talked about it in the focus group, it looked like stuff that had been done without an adequate plan. And it seems to me that's what you're really trying to change.
That was, I will say, that was exactly what we were attempting. When the dome bid came in, because it's leaded copper, has to match the existing design and all of that, when it came in at 400,000 and it got us nothing new, right? It would just be replicating what was there. And that's one of the reasons we called in the architects to say, they don't want to replace this dome in 30 years again. I mean, this, this dome went on in, in 85. So I think it, it was about not necessarily being overly cautious, it was about understanding if that was a wise investment. When we went out to look for architects and even when we went out for the capital campaign person pool, we wanted people that were building libraries around the country. HGA has built three award-winning libraries in Minneapolis. The Hennepin County Library continually wins awards. They've built, so, you know, what you see in libraries right now, and I'm not diminishing anything you all say, it's, you know, I, I live this every day, so I could bore you with the number of studies that are, that are out there. And it's about building flexible spaces, simply because you don't know what's gonna happen in 30 years, right? You don't know if you're going to need a room where you can have programs for individuals that have Alzheimer's, right? I mean, because that's population in your community, so you serve them. But I don't think if anyone sat down and said, this is the diagram of what a library should look like in 40 years, I would be the person I would not hire.
Mr. Mayor, building on what you said, what I don't see and was looking for in this paper was sort of a sustainability plan going forward. How do you sustain your programs, sustain your building going forward? You know, where is your plan to build a maintenance reserve going forward? How is that going to impact your programming and your delivery? Do you, is there a plan for some fee-based, more fee-based programs? I mean, somehow, it seems to me that some of this perhaps should have been addressed going along. You know, it's just like we all face as homeowners. If you don't keep on top of your repairs at the home, pretty soon it becomes overwhelming. So I, I think before we would, in, in my view, before I would be investing in this project, I'd need to see a sustainability plan that this is going to survive going forward. And I think that's somewhat similar to what the mayor was talking about. And so I would really like to see a plan for that.
Sure. I think that that is also another, was another important thing for our board is the money has been continuing to be spent in sort of a reactive manner. So there was $300,000 on the roof not that long ago, you know, maybe within the last 10 years. So it's not like the building's been being ignored, it's just sort of been in a more reactive state. And our goal was really to sort of.
Right.
Do exactly this, to understand, I mean, on the other hand, if you have everything that's new and you're putting $200,000 in your capital accounts every year, that should be more than sufficient to sustain going forward.
Mayor, can I maybe just interrupt? The purpose of Catherine here tonight was to not solve the problems of the library.
It's an update.
It was a, a first look, if you will, because there has been a lot of work that's going on behind the scenes. And I know Catherine probably has a thousand answers for all of your questions because the board has been struggling with us for the last two years. But maybe the way to leave this tonight is to understand that we're really at the first step, that they're probably at about the fourth step, but we as a community are at the first step and that we probably want to identify a subcommittee or a group of, of the city council members who will work collaboratively with the library board and the library staff moving this forward. Because this is a city facility, it will require a major investment of some type of dollars, maybe public-private partnership, what have you. But I think a lot of the questions that we'll raise here seem to be good questions. They may have some answers for it, they may not, but then we can work and bring this back. Because I'm guessing that this is gonna be a conversation we'll be having beyond next fiscal year and maybe, you know, for, the next four or five fiscal years. So I don't know if Catherine has any final comments that she wants to leave us with, but all good questions. But I think the next step would be to identify one or two aldermen who would work with the library board, just keeping abreast of what's going on and at the appropriate time coming back to the city council and to the community about what's going on.
Agreed. I think that makes a lot of sense.
And anyone can pick the next color of the tarp because we're re-tarping the dome in about three weeks. We're gonna weigh in on the colors right now is the time.
Dome covers come in antiqued copper.
I thought maybe you wanted the Lansing tartan on the.
Well, thank you very much. You're obviously.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Catherine.
Professional at what you do and the message is, is challenging, we get it. And so let us put our, all put our shoulders together on this. And I do think it's a kind of deeper, even longer-term subject that maybe we need a little bit, as the city manager was suggesting, kind of a, a team to be a communications link back to the council on what's going on. So I will take that under advisement. Thank you.
And that completes my report for this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, our committee reports to the council, starting with Public Works. Approval of the Public Works Committee recommendation of an agreement for design and bidding assistance and endorsement of a design option, bidding process and timeline for the Forest Park Bluff Failure Project. It's not a very happy subject. So, Michael Thomas, you're back. Our Director of Public Works and Alderman Ray Bushman, Chair of our Public Works Committee, I think have various thoughts for us tonight.
I think between the two of us, we'll, we'll have it covered. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. This evening's staff would like to present an update as to what the Public Works Committee discussed last week. The intention is to review the different options and hopefully bring city council to a point where a recommendation on which option to proceed with, the timeline and the process, we may be able to achieve that. Again, review the options, we'll discuss the timeline, review the Public Works Committee's recommendation, the bluff scheduling option matrix, and then we'll open up for questions and answers. This is a chart that you've seen many a time, that reviews the, the two options that council has narrowed it down to, 1A and 3A. Again, to review for the residents at home. 1A is where we excavate the top of the bluff, we peel back the bluff, very similar to what we did at the South Beach Access Road a year ago. We bring it to a two-to-one slope, we take about 10,000 yards of material off. In doing that, that would result in about 30 feet of the table land being lost. Compared then to 3A, where the project actually is worked on from the base of the bluff, we bring in a good amount of fill to support the bluff, a good amount of stone, clay, and soil on top. So that way, we wouldn't be working on the top, we would therefore not need to remove any of the large trees on the table land. And zero, no feet, excuse me, no table land would be lost. So again, for comparison purposes, table land tree loss on option one, we would have approximately 17. For 3A, where we bring in fill at the bottom, no trees lost. Either option, in fact, including option two with the soldier pile wall, the trees that were on the bluff were going to be removed, have been removed, and the brush as well. The bluff face is bare now, ready for one of the two options. Transplants, if we do the work up on top, there are 31 transplants that we would work with the Forest Park Preservation Board and Cliff Miller specifically as to where those would go. And then you see at the bottom, an estimated cost from our engineer and construction contractor that we worked with. 1A is approximately 970,000, 3A is 1,985,000. Again, very high-level estimates. This just gives a schematic of what the actual options look like, what they've been narrowed down to, the 1A. 1 is the green, A is the yellow. Again, that would be the area that would have the soil removed with equipment up on top of the bluff. The road would be rerouted as well as the trail. This is an engineering picture per se of, of what, what we would see, this is the current with the bluff failure and then after with removal of the material. Again, something very similar to what we'd, what we see at the south end. 3A actually has rerouting of the road and that's, that's a very significant piece. We would reroute the road, bring in a good amount of fill to support the base. Again, do this A option. The study that was performed in March of 2017 showed various areas on the bluff that were at high risk. This A area is one of those. This entire area is at high risk of failure. So again, with that, the estimated cost, $1,985,000. This is again, pictorial of what currently is there. And then with the road being rerouted and fill brought in, that is what it would, would look like as far as the finished product. So the discussion timeline, again, this occurred on June 27th, a Wednesday evening at 5:45 PM. The following Monday, we had a city council meeting and I presented, excuse me, an update to city council about the failure. July 16th, city council approved $40,000, 10 to AECom, 30 to John Keno and Company, to begin to develop cost estimates and options. Then there was a Forest Park Bluff Advisory Committee put together, represented the Finance Committee Chairman, our Public Works Committee Chairman, members from the Forest Park Preservation Board and some residents, to review these options with the engineers and the contractor to really try and understand their pros and cons. September 4th, we brought those recommendations and conclusions from the committee to city councils, so city council was aware of where we were at with the process. At the 17th, the city council workshop, city council had further discussion on the items and recommended that the topic go back to the Public Works Committee, for the Public Works Committee to come back to city council this evening with a recommendation on number one, which option, 1A or 3A. Number two, the process, would we do a design build, would we do a sealed bid? And number three, the timeline, how soon does city council, would city council like to see this project completed? That then was forwarded to the Public Works Committee that met this past Monday evening and they reviewed those three items and I'll review their recommendation as well. So the city council, as I said, the discussion, excuse me, the Public Works Committee had additional discussions on option 1A and 3A with our engineer. The committee actually concluded that the discussion on which option come back to the city council. They did though agree that staff should pursue competitive bidding for the project and that they recommended that we try and have the project completed by Memorial Day so the road could be open, as well as approving AECom's bidding service over the past two weeks and the upcoming two weeks. As far as a scheduling timeline, both options, 1A and 3A, we believe can be achieved and completed by Memorial Day. As the contractor and engineer have told us, we are truly in the sweet spot right now. This is the time for us to be doing this work. The longer, to a certain extent, we delay, the much better a chance we have of going into the beach season, which will obviously impact the beach operations. But both 1A and 3A, if city council were to decide on an option this evening, we could pursue and complete. Just two more slides, this gives a detail of our schedule for 1A and 3A, again, in an attempt to try and get the North Beach Access Road open by Memorial Day. Again, the Public Works Committee met on the 24th, we've advertised for bids. Again, tonight, we're discussing which option the city council, the timeline and the process that city council could pursue. Have our bid opening on the 11th. We would have a Public Works Committee meeting before the city council meeting on the 15th. Bring the recommendation to city council on the 15th. Our contractual engineer would complete his geotechnical analysis the week of the 16th. The contractor would mobilize as well. Then earth excavation for 1A would begin the third week of October and go through early January. And then they would pick up with the bluff seeding, the planting, repair the ring road during the months of April into early May. So that is how the approach would be with 1A. 3A, if city council were to prefer to, to go with option 3A, again, Public Works Committee on the 24th, advertise for bids this evening, city council meeting, bid opening on the 11th, Public Works and city council on the 15th, geotechnical analysis the week of the 16th. And then this project, because again, the work would be occurring from below, there are not as many constraints with the weather. It's, it's somewhat as challenging, but putting a large excavator on top of a wet hill versus simply bringing in stone and compacting it are two very different things. So this can occur a little bit more into the winter months. And then the road construction, bluff seeding and planting would occur again during the month of April and May. So that is a summary of the options, the timelines. As I said, Public Works Committee recommended Memorial Day and bidding out the project, but they asked that city council have further discussions on option 1A versus 3A. So with that, I will entertain any questions you may have. Chuck Myers, our Superintendent of Parks and Forestry is here, if we have any tree questions. Sally Sorthout, Director of Parks and Rec is here as well to address any beach usage and volumes, that type of thing.
Let me first turn to the Chairman of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to expand a little bit on the deliberations that the Public Works Committee had a week ago, as the council remembers during the workshop where we spent time evaluating capital needs for the city, we did spend some time on this issue. And I know our city manager encouraged everyone to help provide guidance to the Public Works Committee as to which of the two options we should proceed, 1A or 3A. And I know Alderman Perschlak submitted comments, Alderman Biedler and also myself submitted comments on that point. But when we were discussing it at the Public Works Committee, we still weren't quite sure if we had a consensus here at the council level. And this is a sort of decision that does require, it's an important decision, it has a lot of ramifications, there's a lot of public input here. And so we decided that we were not gonna make any specific recommendation on the choice between 1A and 3A. Although I do have comments that Alderman Moreno, who was unable to be here today, that I'd like to read in the record later, did provide. But the second question, the process question, there we discussed three different opportunities. Mike has gone into detail on what he calls a hybrid, I call it the expedited process. The process that would get us to completion, at least on paper, would get us to completion by the next summer season. And that was driven by a couple points. One is our Superintendent of Parks and Recreation, Sally, makes very persuasive arguments on the desirability of having that, you know, North Access Road open, the North parking lot available, getting things back to normal for the next summer season. One of the troubling things. One of the troubling things, though, that did come out is her comments that she and her folks did get quite a few negative comments about, why is this thing, you know, blocked? Why are we inconvenienced? So one of the things we do need to do, whatever avenue we proceed, is to enhance communication on whatever approach we take and make sure the citizens do understand it. But in this specific case, you know, Sally and her folks, and she could talk further, I appreciate any comments she would like to add, on how she views the importance of having it open. Now, the two other processes that we were considering would not have the beach, the North Access Road, opened, other than if we can control the risk. And, you know, we had some discussion on that, we don't have any answers, there's a question as how conservative you are, and, you know, Mr. Weaver, I know is here in the audience, and, you know, what options we can do to have a limited access on the north. But, you know, that would be something we should definitely pursue if we decide that we are not going to go down the expedited or the hybrid route that we're talking about. One other point to keep in mind, and can you put up the slide that shows a scheduling option, and let's use one A as example, although it's true for three A too? If we go down here, what seemed to be attractive is we can test the market, we can find out, you know, what's there, who's the, what interest is there, what the construction costs may be, what the construction commentary may be on this idea. And I know Mike has started the process down that road to meet this timeline where he would be asking for the biz to be submitted by October eleventh. This is from construction firms, and we would then have the four days to review and make a decision based upon it. One important thing to me, and I know it's shared by several other aldermen, is we want to make sure that if we go down this process, that we have qualified bidders, that we do have the benefit of going through the bidding process in terms of the cost savings that we expect to achieve by doing that versus a one-source process. And we need to look, and talking to Mr. Thomas, you know, we're going to ask the bidders that are qualified to do this type of work, if they're unable to bid, is it because they don't have an interest, or is it because they don't have, they can't fit the time schedule that we impose? And I can foresee a lot of these construction companies are committed for the months of October, twenty-fourth to January eighth, and may submit a no bid. And that's going to tell us something. If we get, you know, the no bids, maybe we don't want to go down this approach. So there is an advantage going this way. I know there's been some feedback and pushback on whether we should even do this, and that's part of the discussion now, but I did want to share with you the discussion we had. And I don't know if you want to have Sally make some comments on, you know, what she views as the importance of trying this approach to see if we can have it open for the summer. I'll leave it to, you know, you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, well, in due course, I might, let's do questions. We'll start with Jed.
Sure.
Because you were on the committee.
Well, I have questions for the Director of Parks and Recreation about the volume of use that you envision in May and June, the beginning of the season, when the weather's typically not that great, at least in May, I can remember many a Memorial Day where I'm in a big coat. But what do you see in the way of use in the beach?
So I'm going to give you an overall number of usage by residents for last season. Last season, overall usage was fifty-four thousand resident visits, just a little bit over it. You're correct, May and June are a little bit lighter because of weather constraints. I will tell you that even starting in April, if we get a warm day, people flock to the beach. If we get a warm day in February, people flock to the beach. So if we have, you know, an unseasonably warm May and June, those numbers are going to be higher. I don't have the breakdown per month with me, but I can tell you that our residents like to use this asset. It is a crown jewel, and people treat it as such.
Right. So along those lines, my preference is to do three A, but I realize that we have a financial challenge in front of us, given all the other things that the Public Works Committee is working on. And I would like to see if we can work to raise some money privately to make up the difference on the million dollars that is the delta between one A and three A, and see if we could take a little bit more time to raise that money so when we do make a decision, which is going to be decades into the future, people are going to look back at this decision and what we did here. And, yeah, it might affect a little bit of the timing, maybe you lose a month or two in the summer of two thousand nineteen, but in decades down the road, that's not going to look like very much. So I would look for some discussion about whether we could buy a little bit more time to see if we can raise some funds to make up the difference and be able to proceed with option three A.
Okay. Pearl?
Thank you. I would be happy to add comments to that. In fact, Alderman Morris and I, as the Ward One Aldermen, have already begun trying to raise some money. The number we've been working on, the number we've been asking to the people we've solicited, and primarily, we've solicited people who, at this point, who we know were supporters of Forest Park at a level where we ask them, we, you know, we already have acertained their interests. We will be opening this more broadly as we go. And I'm an enthusiastic fundraiser for projects in Lake Forest, I'm an experienced fundraiser for projects in Lake Forest. I might note, you heard me earlier talk about public-private partnerships, and we are in the midst of a very important public-private partnership for the golf course, which also has some deadlines associated with it. It does not have a bluff slide. And we recognize, I think all of us here recognize the urgency of what we're doing, and that makes the timing particularly important. I think there has been discussion about, could we, you know, we've had, all of the groups that have been involved in this, actually, it's not this one, but the other thing that talked about all the meetings, Mike, you might pull that up, just to show all of the conversations that have happened on this, heavily in public settings, including, do we need that road? And I think that we've pretty much come to a clear conclusion that that second road, the beach was configured with that second road in mind, we have eighty parking spaces down there, and it makes sense to keep that road, among other things, for safety. We certainly were glad to have had two roads on June twenty-seventh when we had to get people out on the road that we had newly repaired. But here's where I'm going to go, and I'm going to startle people because I've been on the phone all day and didn't say this to anybody, I am happy to keep trying to raise that five hundred thousand dollars, but I've got to tell you, if we don't do three A, I don't think any of us is going to be able to live with ourselves. We have, and we can have Chuck come up and talk about the value of those trees, these aren't just, these are heritage trees. These trees were here before, these trees were here when Native Americans used that bluff. This table land at the north end of Forest Park is one of the most extraordinary pieces of that park, and thousands, sorry, millions of dollars were raised to make that park what it is now. So to not secure that investment makes no sense to me at all. I just, I can't, I wouldn't be able to live with myself, and I wouldn't be able to face my children and grandchildren if we didn't do everything we can to try to get that money for three A. Now, I think it's important enough that we will do the best we can. I can't tell you, I mean, if I had two extra weeks to, we've got some good news tonight, if Jed and I work hard on this as a committee of two at this point for two extra weeks, you know, I can't tell you that we're going to have a half a million dollars by then. We've had mixed reviews so far. I will say, the state of Illinois has not been a wind at our back. We have some people who are now Florida residents who say, I'm a fairly new Florida resident, I can't make a big investment in this because it's going to, I have to look, if my philanthropic dollars are in Illinois, then I get dinged by the state. And we know that's true, because we've heard this before. So then you start, well, ultimately, Melanie, it's not true, but when you're a new resident, it is.
You'd think it is, maybe, but it's not.
Well, no, but we've heard from new residents that they are, that their financial advisors have told them be very, very careful. So that pulls our pool of people that we know were very supportive of Forest Park Lower. I'm not trying to be discouraging, but I don't think, I don't want you to depend on our fundraising efforts to do the right thing, and the right thing is three A, in my view. It is not cutting off thirty feet of bluff and letting seventeen heritage trees go and living with regret about that for, you know, it'll be the rest of my life, because I'm going to be living in Lake Forest for the rest of my life, but for, forever, it's gone. Once that's gone, it's gone. So I, you know, you hear my concern about this, and you also hear that I am willing to work on it, but I'm, the timetable makes me nervous, because even if we got two extra weeks or an extra month, we can't guarantee that that money would be raised then. And I guess what I hope for is a commitment from the city, where we would already be asking the city for an extra five hundred thousand. I think trying to fundraise more than that on this is not something I can commit to. But who knows? We could get lucky. So I'd like to do both. I'd like to have the city say, three A is what we need to do, we'll find a way to do it and keep the fundraising going. And if we did that, then we could go ahead and sign off on it tonight, but then say, we are going to do our darndest, but we can't make a promise.
Could I just interject one quick question, because it's based on what she's just talking about? It looks like on these timelines that the two options diverge October twenty-fourth. Is that correct?
Correct. For, again, if city council this evening says, yes, Memorial Day is important to us, we want that road open by Memorial Day, these are the schedules that we've put together with those two options. Can we go a little bit further? We can, but we're going to absolutely run that risk of starting to go into June. But that, obviously, in the end is up to city council.
Could I have some feedback on how well the temporary parking worked after we closed the North Beach Access Road?
So I'm going to remind you, for temporary parking, we utilized the supported area of grass in the ring road, although many of our residents chose to go beyond those markers and park on the unprotected grass. We also used the north side of Westminster Road and the college parking lot. And while we did have folks utilize that, I did hear many complaints that they didn't want to have to commute that far, even from Westminster, to access the beach. So while people were appreciative that we provided the options, they were not necessarily happy that they had to make an extra effort to get to the lower level.
Okay, thank you. Turn it back to you.
Me? Oh, I've been down to that beach, as even Mike Thomas knows, many times to look at these options and look those trees in the eyes, so to speak. And Alderman Beidler is absolutely correct, they are significant trees, some of them as old as two hundred years, and you just don't replace those. I'm going to interrupt my comments here for a moment, just to thank Alderman Morris and Alderman Beidler for your efforts thus far in making those calls and giving us some hope that we might be able to raise those dollars. I think that what you've done is truly exceptional, and I want to thank you for that. So I am with Alderman Beidler, I've lived here all my life, I will live here the rest of my life, and I don't think I can look at that, knowing that we destroyed something that is so beautiful and so significant, and such a part of the feeling of that park that's been there since the founding of our community. And so I think we do everything in our power to go with three A. I really can't sign off on taking away thirty feet of table land and those significant trees in that parcel. So I'm with my two first word aldermen on this, and I say, you know, let's look at what Alderman Bushman has suggested, which is the possibility of limited access down that North Beach Access Road. I don't have an understanding of how many days of the summer we really needed to use so much of that off, you know, additional parking and how burdens, was it a few days? Was it every day in July? Do you have a feel for that?
I do. So the beach season, Memorial Day to Labor Day, consists of a hundred and five days, seasonal days. We were in overflow from almost the beginning of the day on forty of those days, that's thirty-eight percent. So that means we are actually turning folks away from the beach because there is nowhere to put them.
So when you say that it was overflow, does that mean, like, we filled up the alternative parking as well, or was it one or two cars that had to park alternative?
Oh, no, no, no. So we filled the ring road, we had many on Westminster, and the college lot was not as greatly used. We actually offloaded all of the staff in the college lot so we could create more parking onsite.
So a lot of it did occur onsite, as it turns out. And I know it's a burden for the staff, and I heard from you loud and clear that some of our residents, unfortunately, were less than patient with this effort. And so I think we have to do a better job communicating what's going on at the beach to our residents and ask for their patience on this, because I think ultimately, most of them would agree with option three A. And if, I'm hopeful that if we explain to them that, you know, we need your patience on this, they will understand. And we do our best to, I think, use that North Beach Access Road with some limited access. I like, Ray Bushman already asked whether there was some way to monitor the potential failure of that bluff, maybe you don't use it after heavy rains or something of that nature. But I think I would not be overly concerned at this point, my opinion, with the Memorial Day opening. And in fact, I would even go so far, and I've talked to our Director of Public Works about looking at grant money if we can't raise this privately, and doing every, I mean, really aggressively seeking some grants. I know the timeline on that gets extended, but I just, I need to know what's out there and how extended those timelines would be before, you know, we say we can't do that, we can't find money someplace else. So.
Can I give you just one more statistic that I have not been asked? And that would play into the patience and the frustration of the residents that do utilize the beach? I need to remind this council that this is actually, so the two thousand and eighteen season is actually the third year in a row that this facility has been impacted by road issues and parking issues because of them. So three years ago, we had to shut down one side of the South Beach Access Road because of bluff failure.
Right.
Then, two years ago, we had to shut down one side of the North Access Road because of ravine failure. And now this year, we had to shut down the entire North Beach Access Road because of the slide. And that plays a lot into the frustration and the lack of patience that comes from the residents.
I'm sure it does. I think everyone, though, needs to understand that a bluff of this nature is a very dynamic environment to be working in, and it's unfortunate, but, you know, perhaps we can, now that the South Beach Access Road is done, we can do the North Beach Access Road and we'll have smooth sailing going forward. I think that would certainly be our hope. So those are my comments. Thank you for your time.
I'm in support of option three A as well, and Alderman Beidler, when we make presentations on the golf course to potential donors, likes to talk about philanthropy being in the DNA of Lake Forest, and frankly, she's right. So not only am I concerned about losing thirty feet of table land, but I'm also concerned about how past donors on the Forest Park project would feel having about how past donors on the Forest Park project would feel having just completed the project that they lose essentially what I consider to be value in their donations by losing 30 feet of table land. So I think the state of Illinois, the federal tax code change and how it affects residents of the state of Illinois and their philanthropy is probably more of a headwind than we realize having just been passed this year. I don't want to add the insult of substantially altering the cosmetics of an important project that a lot of donors in town funded. So I think we really need to protect our investment and protect our gratitude to our donors of the past on this project. So I think we really need to sharpen our pencils and find this funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The most important thing for me is to do the right thing. And the right thing to me is 3A. I go back to Sally's comments about the critical need of continued access, which means, which means to me, what I've always felt, is there needs to be a road there that you can have assured access to the beach, no matter what happens to the bluff. I think Mother Nature has proven to us that she really can't be trusted. And what do we, you know, another 100-year, what the next 100-year rainstorm will be?
Next year.
Yeah, the fifth 100-year rainstorm, you know, in the last three or four. So to me, I think the table land is obviously important to you folks. To me, it's the road. It's all about the road. Do it, do it the right way so no matter what happens, you can always get in and you can always get out. And I would be more assured if we certainly did option 3A.
So I'm in agreement with a lot of what everybody just said. I think we do have to think long-term and to do the right thing. And everybody wants 3A, right? It's the price tag that we don't like. And it's the opportunity cost of what we can't do because we do 3A. That's really the issue. So nobody really speaks for the projects that aren't funded, right? We get really emotional about the table land and the trees and our town was founded on the lake and it's sacred ground. But you know, the reality is it's a million dollars more that we're not spending in infrastructure or ravines or the library or all the other things that are going to happen, right? So I don't think we should take this decision lightly and just throw a million dollars around and say we should do it. Of course, I'm in support of 3A. Who wouldn't be? It's the right solution. And I do believe that in 20, 30 years, the community is going to look at us and say, how do they approach this? How do they think about it? And we have to be really thoughtful about it. That's why I don't really care about the beach opening in May or not. I mean, that's, I'm sorry. I use the beach. People use the beach. If I'm seeing the council thinking critically about the long-term best interest of our community and how to refurbish that asset and then finance it creatively, then so be it. And we'll support you Sally in any way possible to take the friction away from the community because it's coming your way and I totally appreciate that. But I would love to see some option if we can't afford 3A to have some time. I donated to the Forest Park. I don't know if there's 300 or 400 that did it. If you took the big donors out and you just took the people that did and you took 75% of it and you added up, what's the number? Because that's what's viable. And then we have to ask, what's our reservation price to do 3A? Is it 1.5? Is it 1.6? Is it 1.7? And then let's have some time to figure that out. And that's what I like to see happen.
First I'll comment, as I said, Alderman Moreno, who was not able to be here tonight, did share email, and I think it was circulated to the council. But basically, she acknowledges that there's been discussion at length on the two options. And based upon the data, the analysis, the changing environmental conditions and the financial challenges we face, I, meaning Alderman Moreno, support the lowest cost alternative. While this causes me great distress, our financial condition is my primary concern. And I'll use that as, you know, the difficulty I'm having too. And I hear, and I've been most impressed by the impassioned citizens that have been part of Forest Park and the effort they've put in, the beautification they've put in, and the dollars and the resources they've put in. You know, that's great. I'm more from the outside, but I do appreciate, acknowledge and thank you for that. But it still comes back, and that goes to my comments of trying to analyze what are we dealing with? And we're dealing with a $1 million delta, a $1 million additional price tag. And what do we get for it? And there's no question, if they were equally priced, 3A would be the easy way of going. But they're not. It's a $1 million challenge there. And the challenge, you know, it hits us over and over again from our workshop. You know, we've got a, you know, challenge is how we can best spend our citizens' money. You know, with the library coming before us today and talking about the numbers they did, we have significant financial challenges here. But what I did say, you know, in my comments, that I do struggle to justify an additional $1 million beyond what is necessary to solve the bluff problem. You know, 1A does solve the bluff problem, just as 3A solves the bluff problem, gives it a two-to-one safe, stable slope. And you do have a road under both options. One curve's a little tighter than the other, but even with the tight curve, you know, we asked our police chief, you know, how many accidents have we had? How many injuries have we had? The answer, zero reported. So, you know, to what extent can we get, you know, help? And that's what they're looking for. And I appreciate the Alderman from Ward 1 working that because that would be the nice solution, if we can get the public participation. I will make one more point, and it's not because I don't like trees. I love trees. But you know, the number I would like, and I'd be willing to ask Mr. Thomas or Chuck Myers from Forestry to elaborate, but we did walk through the area and in the 30-foot area of table land that would be lost, there were seven mature oaks. There are two others right at the perimeter. I think Chuck says one of them would be lost with the other one. And then there are three or four more that are anywhere from seven to 10 feet back. And whether with the design, you could save those because you won't have to cut into the structural roots and survive those. So, you know, we shouldn't use the word 17 as being, describing the loss of the mature oaks. It's something less than that. But still, they are significant, but yet, you know, and I think Cliff Miller, who I see is here, I think his comment to me was, you know, they are past their prime. They are forest grown. They are not specimen grown. They're also in an area of the park that, you know, cannot be seen from what I'll call the streetscape. They're off to the northeast. And these are factors that, you know, I think should influence our judgment here. But obviously, I hear from my fellow council members that the importance of this, and I can value that. And certainly if we can come up with, you know, public participation, that would be meaningful, that would be great. And if we feel that, you know, despite what Sally says, and you know, and I hate to put her on the firing line, that, you know, we can't communicate to our citizens in a way that they'll understand and be understanding. Yeah, I don't quite have all the optimism that was expressed, but I have a concern there and it's something we should factor into our thinking.
Thank you. Let me try a summation. You know, what we got here is a classic allocation of scarce resources to a lot of desirable Specifically, a strong preference for 3A across the council with the, colliding with the reality of the city's finances, which is a reality. And the city is fundamentally in a position where it cannot afford $1,980,000 all by itself. It's just simply we're, there's just, it's just too tight. And we've got to be very careful about how we expend capital budget monies and cash reserves. We've got to be very careful about this. One thing that's spoken about, just to interject, this idea of monitoring the road and having some access of it and sort of waiting till it's wet and see if it's going to fall and then we'll close the road. I think that's entirely unacceptable. You know, these landslides are exciting things. They happen very fast. It's never less than 100 tons. If a car had been going up the road at that exact moment, you know, as a matter of perfect timing, it would have, it would have just been brushed off the road and down the hill. And I just don't think that's going to work in terms of our standards of public safety and management. And who would you leave to make that decision? You're not going to hire a third party to take that risk. So I think with regard to the opening of the beach, I fully understand and empathize with Parks and Rec that because early in the summer, the bluff let go, you had this completely new regime of access to invent and it caught, our staff is always prepared for every eventuality, but it really caught our citizens short. And I think they had a little trouble adjusting to the reality that we got a real problem. And so in going forth with 1A or 3A, we're obviously going to have a highly developed, long lead time commo plan about what we're going to do for the opening of the beach in the summer, depending on these options. So I think expectations can be managed and parking can be managed for some date other than exactly May 30th. So I would make the following proposal that, building off of everything I said, I think we should give the fundraising effort of $500,000, I wish it were $600,000, but let's overshoot to a chance. And quite frankly, in my view of things, if the beach didn't open until June 30th, so be it. So I think this fundraising effort should be able to get most of the month of October to run its course. And if we can't raise the money, if we can't do it, I just don't think we can do 3A. I just don't think the city is in a position of warranting appropriate use of its financial resources in this trying time. And also, we're in, of course, a trend of more difficulty. We've never had a more clear and present danger to the city's finances than what the state poses to us today. So I would suggest that, or propose, that we go forward with bidding both proposals, both alternatives, as you're, perhaps you're not saying that, but I'm saying that. Go forward with bidding both, okay, to buy some overlapping effort here. And by the, I'd like it to be before the 24th, but we can pick a date here, during that third or fourth week of October. Let's see where we are. If it's to be successful, it can happen quickly. I mean, I know from my own fundraising and so forth. Let's see where we are. You know, if we're on the brink of getting it and we haven't quite gotten there, okay, that's, we can probably deal with that and so forth. But I think, you know, the guiding principle of the councils that have preceded us and have guided us is to do what's right in the best long-term interest of Lake Forest. And I think waiting a bloody month more perhaps to deliver the beach in the spring is certainly well worth it, if not even more time. So we'll do the two bids. We'll open and we'll see what we're up against in actual dollars, Mike. We'll keep running the shot clock here down towards the end of the month, then we're just going to have to make a decision. Mr. City Manager, you're probably going to have seven reasons.
Well, I don't want to rain on your parade, Mr. Mayor. But part of the problem is that to follow that course of action, we would have to award two contracts to AECOM tonight to prepare 1A and 3A. Because the contractors aren't going to bid on anything, particularly 3A because you also have the construction of a road. And so 3A is going to be much more detailed. I think the engineering proposal was $125,000 roughly for 1A and $225,000 for 3A. So part of the, I think part of the problem is, and maybe I can offer a slight twist to your recommendation, is that we've been at this for three months. I think everybody knows what the alternatives are. I think as Alderman Preschlack put it in his email, you have to almost separate the wants and the needs here because stabilization of the bluff is the need. That has to be done in any way, shape or form that we can. The issue of the trees and the table land and the road are the wants. And the staff has sort of been intrigued by this because we're constantly asked to be, operate like business. And if we were operating like a business, this is no question, we go with 1A. But many times, we in the public sector are asked to not operate like a business and respond to what the needs of the community are. But I guess what I'm going to suggest is one of two alternatives. The City Council continues to proceed with selecting, or with accepting the bids for 1A, but not accept them until the November 5 meeting, which gives basically a month to try and raise the money. At that November 5 meeting, you can see where the fundraising component is and either decide to accept them or reject them and start over. It also puts a sense of urgency because if the community thinks the council's going to do 3 anyways, why donate? And the alternative is, if the majority of the City Council really wants to do 3A, then don't worry about the extra million. Go forward and let's spend the money. Because the reality is that part of this issue is a technical issue, which is fixing the bluff, and we have two options. The difficult part is what I would call the adaptive issue. And that's the trees and the table land and the road. And any way you cut it, half the community is going to think you're brilliant and half the community thinks you're stupid. Because as it's been raised here, it does have economic implications. And alternatively, I've had some people say, I think you should take the trees down because the best thing the Forest Park project did was open up the vistas to the lake. And I want to see more vistas to the lake. So there's those kinds of differing opinions that are within the community. And unfortunately, you're in the predicament that you're going to be damned if you do and damned if you don't. And so ultimately, I think, you know, if you really feel strongly about 3A, that's great. Do it. Just understand what both the financial implications are, and then more importantly, that you are subject to criticism. If you go with one, you're also subject to criticism for not sort of doing the right thing and protecting the trees and so on and so forth. But I think it's time to make a decision and move forward, either with, let's just do three and so we can get at it and get moving because all of these timelines also are predicated on weather. And that's another thing we can't control. And I do appreciate all of you saying we'll protect Sally and so forth, but the reality is, you're not there on a Saturday when a 17-year-old beach guard is getting screamed at by a resident of Lake Forest. And I'm embarrassed to say that it happens. It happens more times than we would like to admit. And so now is the time, let's make a decision one way or another, stand by our decisions and move forward. Because staff doesn't care. We just don't want to keep talking about this for three months. And then three months goes to another six months and so on and so forth. I think it's pretty clear what we have to do. So it's just a matter of setting our own timetable and moving forward. So I think I tried to... So, I think I tried to keep both options alive unless the council right now just wants to say, let's just do 3A and let's move forward. And then staff can move accordingly.
But under your proposal, so because of the engineering cost and, and the timing involved, is.
We'd have to ask Bill Weaver. That's right. Well.
We only have 1A to bid, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And.
And that's a simpler project, because contractors can come in, you're not building a new road, you're not doing that. It's, it's a fairly simple project, if you will. It's actually, most of that work is actually in the supervision, once the work gets underway.
Right.
But, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Weaver, but if we're going to go for 3A, we need some time to develop those plans, so we can get something on the street to get a reasonable bid back from contractors going forward.
Right. And then by holding the award of bid till November 5th, we'll see where we are with the, what, how this all rolls out, is that we'll see where we are on the fundraising. We'll also be at the starting line on doing the engineering for 3A, if we decide, we're successful and we decide to move forward, which is going to really push the beach, likely have the beach closed for a chunk of the summer, if not a lot of it.
Sure. And if Alderman Morris and Beidler say, hey, we're really making progress, this thing's really looking positive, we could tee up the AECom proposal even for the next meeting that's going forward, if we have that indication. But we were just trying to move this forward, because I don't want to say we've got the best-case scenario in here, is, but everything needs to fall in line just to have it open in early June or Memorial Day, and you know it never works out that way. So, I mean, if you were asking me, I would hopefully have this project done by 4th of July, which isn't going to make a lot of residents happy.
Well, I think if there's so much variability in the schedule due to the weather, that's why it shouldn't be the main driver of this decision, right? Because if we're forcing a decision now because of timing, it's kind of a false narrative, right? I mean, to open up the beach in May, I mean, that shouldn't even be on the table. It should be, what's the right thing and what's our reservation price to do the right thing, and how do we think about it? I feel like, I would like to see more time. My reservation price is not 1.98 for 3A. There may be five other Aldermen that have a reservation price for 1.98 for 3A. And I would say mine's probably closer to 1.5. I mean, it just is, based on all the issues that the mayor said. But I would respect Aldermen that, that disagree with me and have the higher reservation price. So, is that what you're suggesting? We figure out where we are on that?
I'd like to, I'd like to say that I have no reservations on 3A. I don't, just do it. Doing the right thing, to me, is doing the right thing. Prue, I hope you do a good job. Quite frankly. Prue, Prue, quite frankly, it doesn't matter to me. Doing the right thing means 1.9, 1.5.
So, you would spend $5 million on that, Jim?
What's that?
So, you would spend $5 million on that?
As long as most of it was your money.
Well, it's not, it's the taxpayers' money.
Yeah, well, but I would do.
That's what we're doing here.
I would do, I would do. Jim, relax. I would do, 1.9 is fine with me. To me, that's doing the right thing. If we have, if we have to spend that money, we'll find a way to spend it.
Actually, you don't have to do 1.9. Would this be an appropriate time, Joan, to, I don't know if it's time for the public, but we actually have some success.
Some, some good news. So, you won't have to spend 1.
Why don't, in the interest of keeping this going.
Mr. Mayor, you know what I'm.
Why don't, yeah, we, we have some first donations. Let's just say we're at the first $100,000.
Yes.
Okay, already. And we've hardly begun, so.
A week, a weekend.
A, a week. So, you know, that, you bring up an interesting point, Mr. Long-Term Thinker, which is, the price will be, let's say, $1,900,000, right, Mike? We're not going to go over that. And, but it's already $100,000 less.
That's right.
So, you know, we, we need to, there's some foundations in town that I think would, would help support this. And I understand the disincentive issue and all that, but it's, this, you know, doing such a thing as committing to $1,900,000 does, it will block other expenditures, for sure. So, how should we proceed? Should we, any more particular thoughts, or should we just start with some motions here?
Are you going to do public comment? Do we do a motion first?
Public comment first, I think, don't you?
Okay, we'll do a public. Any more Aldermanic thoughts?
Well, I would just say that maybe the option is defer to November 5th, give us four weeks to work on this and come back. You know, we've lost a month, but again, that's not our target, is not, from the city council, I know the staff wants the beach open, but that's not our target.
It's a week off the 24th, yeah.
You know, I would just ask the council if you think it's worth at least understanding if there's some grant money out there, potentially. I understand it extends our timeline, and so we can all certainly consider that, but I would just like to know, you know, as a, as a default position that could be considered, doesn't hurt to ask the question, could there be grant money out there? But, you know, don't do it if the rest of you aren't interested.
Certainly a public body or a large institution, I mean, we're talking months and years. I, I just.
Too much lead time.
Way too much lead time. I mean, it's, it's not, it's absolutely worth asking around, but I just, I just don't think that's a likely player.
I understand that, but, but I'd just like to know what's, what's out there in the poss, I think it's another consideration that I would like explored.
And Mike, do you want to address that?
I can address the grants, that yes, we have and we will continue to look into grant possibilities. What we have come across so far, more so geared towards ravines, but there might be grant, grants out there for bluffs, and we can look into that. As a reminder of the grant process, the grant process requires a full, complete design before you submit your request. So, you've got to go through that three or four-month process to have a full design completed. You then submit the request, and you, as the mayor has noted, you will sit and wait, and you'll either receive a yes or a no, and potentially an 80/20 split. But we will absolutely investigate.
I gave you the, you know, some possible grant sources today, and, you know, I just would be interested to know if those are at all feasible, so.
And if I could just add one note, if, if the city council is preferring 3A, we can continue to bid 1A and have those numbers for you by November 5th. We could probably, we're planning on having them for you by October 15th. But if you decide to do 3A, from staff level, I think us bringing you the recommendation to approve engineering on November 5th, and give the months of November, December, January, February, to do a complete design, put the project out to bid in the winter months, when contractors are lining up their work, and we'll hear back from the council, because what I'm hearing is Memorial Day doesn't seem to be the push. And if it isn't the push, then we are going to get a better price if I can put out to bid a complete design, put it out to bid in the winter months, when contractors are lining up their work, and we start the work the day after Labor Day. That is one option, but again, that's where this timing comes in. If, if the timing, where you say, no, we want you to start that thing in the spring, and sorry, we're going to have to deal with the inconvenience, we can do that as well. We can still put the project out to bid in February, March.
What is the delta on that?
The cost delta, between bidding it in the February/March timeframe, I don't think there will be a significant cost delta. It is simply the contractors looking at their schedule and saying, I've got to lock myself up for two months at this place, lock myself up for two or three months at this place. So, we tell them that upfront in the bid process, we give them a schedule that we expect them to complete it by. But that will be important for us to hear back from city council. If it is 3A, are you content with work occurring during the beach season? Or is there going to be too much confusion, too much traffic, and you want to keep all that off of Lake Road and Deer Path during the beach season, then we would look to start at the day after Labor Day.
Mike, can I interrupt for one second? Maybe I'm going to ask this question of Bill Weaver. Bill, if there's a consensus of the council this evening to go with 3A, we have a proposal from you to go forward with 3A. If they were to pull the trigger on that tonight, how does that affect this timeline, and how quickly could you get something put together for bidding? You need to come to the podium, so, and introduce yourself?
I'm Bill Weaver with AECom. We caught wind of the discussion about the 1, 1A, 3A earlier today, so we kind of started jumping into that, just in case. This design-build hybrid approach, they weren't going to get a full design upfront anyway. Essentially, we're going to educate them in the next week or so on what's involved, what we know. We've started to do some modeling, so we've got packages ready, and today we prepared a package, so we could kind of go either way, because the process is starting tomorrow with the pre-bid. And then the design processes, it is somewhat different, but the big part of the job is the earthwork. The roads are, you know, roads are roads, and they take a certain amount of design work. We'd have to do some soil borings that we wouldn't have to do otherwise for the road portion of it. So, we, we could get started on that and move fairly quickly. We're, we've started down the path. And it really depends on when, when you determine to, to go out for the bids.
So, hypothetically, let me throw this at you, this is going to sound a little bizarre, but what if the council gave you direction to proceed with design bid of 3A, and on November 5th, we see that we're not going to get any donations, and let's just use that hypothetically, and so they said, okay, we've changed our mind and we want to go to 1A. Can you go back to 1A easier than going from 1A to 3A, from a design standpoint?
So, they're really two different animals. One is an excavation and the other is a fill. However, the, the analysis that goes into it from, from the slope stability perspective is very similar, just different materials, and we've already started testing that. They both end up with a very similar geometry, it's just a different way of getting there. The biggest difference would be if you decide to go with the design-build hybrid, that's something we've got to move on now. And there's a disadvantage in that you're not going to have a complete package, so you're asking the contractor for a maximum price based on whatever we can get them up to speed on. And I think we can get them very far down the path, and then take some time to get them all the details as we go. So, they're going at risk, so is that going to cost you some money? Depends on how hungry the contractors are. The advantage to having a full design is that it answers a lot of questions and potential loopholes. So, when you go out to bid, all the specifications are laid out clearly, and they're really bidding a contract document that's well thought out, and you're not saying, hey, you agree to, to bid a project that's half-baked. Well, it's half-baked in a, in a good way, and we want a guaranteed maximum price. So, is there a price differential there? You don't know that until you get the bids.
We were just talking, by the 15th, and we're going to be working on this, we'll have some indication whether we're making progress or we're hitting a brick wall. So, we could give you an update, and if we're making progress, then let us finish the process by November 5th. If we just hit a brick wall and everyone's saying, forget it, we're not interested, okay, then we, different, different choice. But we still can vote on it on the 15th or the 5th, depending on how we're doing.
And neither.
Oh, excuse me. I think there's a strong desire to do 3A, but let us, let us work on it, see if we can't make this.
You know, I feel like we're putting all this burden on your shoulders.
Yes.
Yeah.
So do I feel bad.
So, I, I know, I can, I can feel your attention building over here, so I'm sure that I speak for many of us who would be glad to help you do whatever dog and pony show you need to do down at the beach, give you names, although I'm sure we all know the same names, but if you're not available, we would be glad to help, a guided tour down at the beach. Please tap us to help you. This is, we're all in this together, and you're glad to help.
It's hard to do it, because we run into a public meeting, so once it goes beyond Prue and I, then it's a public meeting.
Right, but I'm saying, if you can't make it sometime, you know, call Jim.
So, Alderman Morris, how might that be shaped into a proposal?
Defer this to the, to the 15th.
For the decision.
This decision to the 15th. Let's give you an update, in which case you could either vote for one of the, the two options based on our experience, or we're making progress, and let's defer it to the 5th of November, which is what we've talked about originally.
And, and proceed with the bid.
October 15th?
November, October 15th, and if we're making progress, then let's vote.
And also, move forward with the 1A bidding as part of that, so at least by the 15th, we'll know, the 11th, we'll know.
We come back and say, forget it, nobody's interested, can't do it.
Well, or what, how that, you know, what that $900,000 really is.
We may say, that's okay, we want 3A.
Right. But at least it's more input, more, more information.
We will definitely, I think, know more in two weeks.
Yeah.
It may not, you know, we, the odds of us being at 500 seems slim, but, but you never know. If we're well on our way, we'll, we'll let you know.
Exactly. This is to be pursued without prejudice.
I know, I know, I know. Well, I'm usually very positive.
So, let me try this. A motion for.
You didn't do the motion.
Mike Thomas to proceed. Well, I know, can we do the motion and then have public comment?
Do we have public comment before? Oh, comment first.
I think public comment first.
A comment, we'll have public comment. Mike. Anybody who's, yes, Joan Dupre.
I'm Joan Dupre. I live at 999 South Ringwood, and I've been there for over 40 years and love it. First of all, I want to say thank you so much for extending your review process, because I was here once before and asked if you could just take more time, and you definitely, you know, the staff and the councilmen have done a very extensive job. I'm here reading on behalf of the Forest Park Preservation Board. I'm president of that group. And the Forest Park Presentation Board has a mission to protect and preserve the park. We support the council's search for the most responsible and safe, long-term solution for bluff and table land preservation. What I'm going to read going forward is a lot of what all of you said, so, thank you. This board feels strongly that option 1A is not a good solution for the following reasons. 17 large trees, mainly oaks, many of which are mature estate-sized trees, would be removed. The table land, 2, the table land would be reduced by 30 feet, and once again, and once it's gone, it's lost permanently. 3, the north beach road turns sharply and is very narrow. Rebuilding it would not provide a safer, safer access. If the council's decision is to adopt option 3A, the board will consider a commitment of $100,000 as seed money to show our concern for a best solution. This option saves the north-end table land, the oaks, and also provides a design for an improved and safer access road to the beach. Our board agrees that option 1A should not be adopted based on a short-term goal of opening the north access by Memorial Day, using, and using the least amount of money possible. In general, the Lake Forest community is understanding and supportive when its residents know the reasons why a specific plan is being implemented. In the past, they have accepted some inconvenience in favor of a sound, long-term goal. Good communication between the city and residents is critical to a successful outcome. Thank you for your time and professional approach to the many difficult decisions you must make. Thank you from our board. And also, I just want to comment on the parking. I thought, and Sally, if she's still here, there was a lot of parking at the beach, at the south beach access road, the boat area. So, that was also used for parking, and I didn't see that full very often. I never saw it full, but I'm sure it was. So, it's not just Westminster and in the park, there, there's a lot of other.
Right.
And that gives you very good access to the beach.
Right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very generous citizen support.
Yeah, that's terrific.
It's wonderful. Someone else?
Good evening. My name is Rami Lopez.
My name is Rami Lopet, and I live at 410 East Woodland Road. And yes, I want to echo my thanks to our alderman, First Ward Alderman, I'm a First Ward resident, for pitching in and trying to do this, and to the Forest Park Board as well for being stand-up donors and so good to Lake Forest. I have not made up my, my own mind about 1A or 3A, and I think all of you know I'm an original tree hugger in this town. But I just want to make, I have more questions than I have answers at this point. Perhaps, it doesn't sound like you do, but I do. And I want to, I want to be sure that, that I can see this more comprehensively. The two options that are in front of you both come out with the same result. They both come out with a two-to-one slope. So for that extra million dollars, Alderman, you're getting the same grade of slope, which is a very steep grade, and I'm not sure anyone could guarantee that it will not slough again. One of my questions is, what is the slope all across the entire bluff at Forest Park? Because already, we've seen bluffs sloughing. We have storm fence up right in front of one of the brand-new benches at Spring Lane. So is the idea to get a calculus of how much this is going to cost the city comprehensively to get that two-to-one, or better, I would prefer better, slope? Or are we just going to let it slough naturally all the way down the rest of the park? So that's one of my broader questions. Also, does the budget for this include redoing the parking lot, which badly needs it, it's terribly water damaged? The landscaping plan must be put together simultaneously with this. We can't have bare soil at any point at all. Up at the top, my concern is actually not with those 17 trees. Hard for me to say this. My concern is more with the table land shape itself and preserving that point, that peninsula which you have described as a, as a sacred place. I totally agree. Can that, can there be a hybrid between option 3A and 1A so that that point is sculpted to look just like it does today? But we, if you take that million dollars and you divide a million by 17 trees, that's $58,823 a tree. I think I would have to vote for using that same money, I think, I'm not sure, don't quote me, to re-landscape that bluff, if that's possible, to resculpt and save the shape of, of that land there. Don't know. And use the money also on the rest of the bluff.
Thank you.
Does 1A include rebuilding the ring road and the path, which are, have very deep foundations? Those, that, that road was built to last. It's like a runway. Also, I'm sorry, I'm taking, I'm trying to worm my way through this.
That's what I was going to suggest, Rami.
I have one more question.
Okay. Because I was going to say, if you want to come in, I'm sure Mr. Myers and Mr. Thomas would be happy to meet with you and answer your questions.
Sure they will, but I want to raise a little doubt here and see if we can figure out some way of, and can, for example, can, can three, can, can one of these options be built so that you're using equipment that, that works only at the base? Can 1A be done without putting any equipment on the top of the table land?
It cannot.
Even using a long-reach, what I'm told is a long-reach excavator?
That's what we've been told by contractors, is this slope is too steep to be operated from the top. That's why 3A, they work from the bottom. 3A, they work from the bottom.
No, 1A, from the bottom.
1A, they work at the top. They can't work from the bottom.
Okay, that's a question I'd like tested.
Okay.
Also, in 3A, well, there's a 10-foot bench. Could, for example, that bench be configured so that we have a jogging path up, up the bluff, so that we have an alternative way to allow more recreation in our park? So I think, you know, I think there's more questions. Maybe you have the opportunity to flex a bit and protect the land and our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Is there anyone else like to speak?
Mayor Axine Alderman, my name is Cliff Miller. I've lived here for quite a while and been intimately involved with Forest Park, as many of you know. I just want to kind of step back a little bit farther. I've heard this mentioned today, tonight, there wasn't any real specifics on it. But you know, we've invested 35, over $35 million in this project. Started back in the late 80s when we rebuilt the whole beach down below. Now we've done above, we've done the South Beach Access Road. We've invested well over $35 million over the last 30 years in this park. To me, the investment of the additional million dollars is, is when you look at it in that overall scheme, that number gets smaller and smaller and smaller. When you look at it in terms to the fact that you're already talking about 20% of the goal already on the table before we've even moved forward with some of the major fundraising. To me, I'm an optimist about it. You know, I like to jump on 3A, and we'll figure it out later. But that's just my opinion, because I know the people in this community. I've worked with them my, almost my entire life, and people will set up, set up, I mean, step up, and we will get this done. So I'm very much in opinion that 3A is one of the few times we actually gained something at the beach, you know, instead of losing it, losing the South Beach Access Road slopes, losing this, losing that, to actually build more of something. I mean, keep in mind, when we talk about seven trees or 17 trees and table land, that table land is a million and a half per acre and a half. That's what it sells for. We talk about $58,000 for a tree, that's less than you're fined if you cut one of those trees in some of these communities. It's a heritage tree, unreplaceable, irreplaceable. So when you look, in my opinion, at the bigger picture, this additional million dollars that is required, if we are able to put together, and I have no doubt we will, as I said, we're already 20% there, half of that from private citizens as a shared project, public-private, I have no doubt that this will work. And I have no doubt that we will come up with financing in some ways, probably several ways. We were able to, in a very short period of time, shorter than would be typical, up at Lake Bluff, we received $350,000 this year, Lake Bluff Park District did, to increase and to, to improve access to the beach. Well, I can't think of anything that improves access better than getting a road opened again. So, you know, these are things we didn't have on the table. Lake Bluff Park District didn't have any of that on the table in February. In July, they rewarded the money in February. They didn't have a clue about it. So it doesn't necessarily take years to pull off. It takes determination, it takes optimism, and it takes moving forward in a way where, you know, the failure side of it's not an option. We've got over $35 million in this project. We have built the jewel on which our town rests. To not do the right thing for a million dollars, I just can't get my arms around that. I just cannot think of how that would be even part of our discussion. So one man's opinion, one citizen's opinion, and as you all know, you know, Forest Park means a lot to me, as well as to many other people here, and that North Point, as described by Rami and others, you know, that really is a special place. And that's not something you find. You can go up and down the bluffs, look at all these places, but to have a ravine on one side and a bluff on the other is a very rare thing. South Beach was the same, but we lost most of it. So anyway, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I have to say that I'm a firm believer in let's just lay down the cards, go 3A, and move on.
Thank you. Important words from a knowledgeable observer. Yes, sir?
My name is Sandy Gunnan. I live at 650 Northmore Road, and I have a couple of comments. Certainly how the process is handled, too, which I think has been a little irregular, and that's not a road we should continue to go down. Last Friday morning, the site of the entire north bluff, starting at the curve in the access road and going down to the parking lot by the first beach, without a single tree remaining, that was certainly a stunning way to start a day. Equally stunning was the realization that this renegade act occurred without any public notification or without city council approval. That's really troubling. I find it hard to believe that city staff acted without either the director tacit approval of Bob Kiley. This act was not a miscommunication with an outside contractor. City equipment and crews were observed removing all the trees from the bluff before any approval was given. Even the Public Works Committee, as I understand it, was unaware that the bluff would be cleared prior to council approval. I did receive a copy of the Public Works Committee packet this last Friday afternoon and was disheartened but not surprised that the recommended options appear to be evaluated only from an engineering and financial perspective. Any historic, cultural, or environmental considerations and solutions for similar problems from another region, along with any relevant public comments, were included. They should all be elements in a complete evaluation, especially since this is such a unique site, and we as a community are the caretakers. Lack of adequate or timely public notification has been an issue in more than this project. In addition, the perception by many is that residents' concerns are too often secondary to a specific city agenda. The protracted maneuvering during the Forest Park project, lack of transparency during the Third Rail Amtrak discussions, and now the destruction of landscape within a historic park in order to force a specific solution. All these events and more combined to undermine the trust and confidence that the city is capable of functioning in the best interest of the residents. And I think that's an ongoing problem, not unique to this particular situation. I would urge everyone, not just the council members, to walk down to the north edge of Forest Park and walk out in that table land. Look at the stakes with the green tags on them. 30-plus feet that that table land would be missing is not just 17 trees. The whole viewpoint is just so totally altered, it really destroys half of that park. It's more than just keeping the road safe, have to do, no question with that. The money you invest now is going to be, it's going to make possible much of that park to remain valid for, you hope, another century. So take a look at it. Don't just look at the drawings. They're an eight-and-a-half-by-11 sheet, really doesn't tell the story. And I'm very encouraged to hear that a lot of you are interested in pursuing 3A. But in 3A, there may be some modifications to that which can save some funds. You need to get a little more information before this is all chiseled and stoned. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'll bring it.
Mr. Mayor?
Back to, yes.
Can I make a suggestion for the council's consideration? Based on what I'm hearing from the council, it might be appropriate for the council to make a motion to table numbers one and three underneath the council action on this item until the October 15th meeting. Number two is the, we can proceed with the process of having something, some information on 1A at the October 15th meeting, but we'd also need to approve number four, where we would have AECOM not only work on 1A, but they could, yeah, 1A, but they could also start work on 3A for the November 5th meeting. So the only expenditure of funds then would be the $18,000 for their assistance in design and bidding on 1 and 3A.
When you say some in number, under number two, some information, would not be a full bidding process for 1A?
Yeah, we would have actual bid numbers for 1A.
Okay, okay.
But we would just present them for information only.
Exactly, at that time.
Right.
So a motion, please. The memory test.
A motion to table the vote and discussion until October 15th, city council meeting, and authorization for AECOM to begin repairing documents for 1A. That sound right?
Right, and to pursue a bid for 1A.
I think it was number one and four we were talking about? You wanted to do items one and four, was that your?
Table to October 15.
Which ones are?
One and three.
One and three, okay.
And two and four would proceed with 1A for the October 15th meeting, and with the contract not to exceed $18,000 for design bidding, knowing that that's going to be for both 1A, but also to begin doing work on 3A.
That's what you meant to say.
Sounds good.
I don't like, I don't like, yes, but I don't like it at all. Why would we go, why would I vote to go after, to do that for 1A when I'm convinced in my own mind that the, the only way to go is 3A? What a waste of money. To me, it's a waste of, waste of money. Unless I'm missing something. I mean.
Well, there's the issue in fundraising about incentives. If we were just to decide tonight.
Yes, sir.
The city unilaterally is going to go forth with the million nine or whatever. When you're talking to a donor, it's a little tougher when the city's already said, we're going to do this. And I, I do think that a million nine, yes, is the right long-term thing to do, 3A, I agree with that personally, but the city really is, is, the million nine is a problem. So I think it's worth helping the fundraising effort.
Why wouldn't I?
By postponing that decision.
Why wouldn't I table everything until the 15th, so that?
Because we'll just have a little more information on 1A, what the actual cost is.
But why do I want that if I, if that's not going to be an option that I would pursue? And I, no disrespect, but I heard probably, I believe I heard at least four, perhaps five aldermen that said the same thing, only used different words.
I'm not so sure about that.
There's a couple of heads nodding affirmatively.
Well, Alderman Reisenberg, the alternative, and I think this is what I was trying to stress earlier, would be to make a motion to ward an engineering contract to AECOM for the design of 3A. That's all you need to do tonight. And then that will begin the process, and the staff will move forward with 3A and bidding that out as quickly as possible.
That's what I would like to do.
So the, I mean, I absolutely take the mayor's point. If, if part of what we were trying to do in raising funds is stress the urgency of getting this resolved, if it looks as though the city's going to do it anyway, is, is, is the story less compelling? I think as, as aldermen, we can certainly make the case that this is a, a very hard decision to make, even though the beach is a benefit to the entire citizenry, because there are, I mean, the numbers from our last meeting, $34.4 million worth of capital improvements needed, priority one capital improvements in the next five years, for which we have no identified funds. And then this happens on top of it. In the next five years, something else could happen. We've had surprises every year. So how do So, how do we make the case, though, that we still, we have some, we have some reserves, we have some money, but we genuinely benefit by the support from individuals, a tax-deductible contribution? So, we're trying to make that case as compelling as possible.
I understand, Prue, but what, but do we have to spend eighteen thousand dollars to do it?
To, to, to take the time to, and the truth is...
To post, to posture?
Who's going to vote for one A if we don't think it's the right thing to do?
Yeah. What's the, why, again, can't we wait two weeks and table this whole thing?
To do any, anything for two weeks?
Well, the thought was to have some...
Get going on some plans.
We could table for two weeks. My only point is, I think, and this is really where Alderman Reisenberg is, make it, make a decision, move.
I don't think it puts you in a bad bargaining position, Prue. I mean, no disrespect. I mean, go spin your web. I've got all the confidence in you in the world, Prue.
Lovely.
You can be dismissed from the meeting and start tonight.
That's right. I think it's a little late to make calls.
What's that?
You really?
I think we tabled this for two weeks.
I've said, I've said my piece.
Table the whole thing for two weeks.
Table it for two weeks.
I've said my piece.
Well, we're sort of pregnant, though, with, we're moving forward with AECOM to do some of this work. Now, if we want to table everything, then we'll tell AECOM, don't do any more work, but, well, as much as they like the community, I don't think they're going to work for free. So, if we're looking at some of these alternatives, then...
Table for two weeks.
I would make the motion to table it for two weeks.
All right, somebody make the motion.
I second it.
We'll have a vote on it. Okay, who made the motion?
Moi.
Okay. You seconded it?
I, I seconded it.
Okay, we're tabling, this is a roll call vote.
Could be a voice.
Voice vote, okay. All those in favor of tabling this item for two weeks, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda. It's our omnibus...
You mean it's over?
I hope so!
Oh, no, oh, no.
Which is it, four?
What?
Items for omnibus vote consideration, we have eight this evening. Approval of the September fourth city council minutes. Number two, approval of September seventeenth city council workshop minutes. Three, approval of the check register for the period August twenty-fifth to September twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Award of a one-year contract renewal with Interdev for information technology support. Five, approval of a waiver of bid requirements and approve a three-year contract with CDWG for the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement for Maintenance and Software Licensing Based on State of Illinois, a State of Illinois contract pricing. Six, approve the purchase of an ArcServ appliance and disaster recovery solution with one-year maintenance necessary to support the city's enterprise resource planning software. Seven, consideration of ratification of a resolution of authorization for an OSLAD grant program project at South Park. Eight, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the building review board. This would be a first reading, and if desired by council, a final approval. As we always do, any one of these could be removed for separate voting. Are there any particular clarification or factual questions on these items? There being none, I will ask for a motion to approve the eight omnibus items.
Go move.
We have a second. This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlach?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman has stepped out. It's seven yays, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, six.
Glad you can count, city clerk. Next item is ordinances. Consideration of an ordinance granting the renewal of a non-exclusive cable television franchise agreement between the city of Lake Forest and Comcast of Illinois X-11 LLC, the twelfth. This is the first reading of this ordinance, and I invite Mike Strong to the podium to present this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. We'll start this evening, an ordinance has been prepared, granting a non-exclusive franchise renewal to Comcast for cable, cable services in, in the city of Lake Forest. This is a first reading. I'll start with just some quick history, set some legal framework, and then talk about some of the terms of the agreement. I've also have Frank Duel here with Comcast, can kind of help answer some operational questions you might have. But really, this is a first reading of the, of the ordinance this evening. By way of background here, really, our authority to grant local franchises is set forth in both federal and state law, which establishes standards and guidelines for us to establish these agreements with cable operators. The Act also provides procedures for granting both a franchise and a renewal, which can be done through either a formal or an informal process. Majority of these renewals are done informally, which are negotiations between a franchisee and a franchiser on the various terms for operating. Our first franchise agreement was granted in nineteen eighty-eight. This would be the third franchise agreement that we've had for, for cable services in the city. Our most recent franchise was granted in two thousand and eight for a ten-year term. And, you know, by and large, really, the purpose behind these are to allow access by cable operators to right-of-way, to install, maintain, and provide cable services in exchange for resources. In that case, it's a franchise fee. So, legal framework here, briefly, what's within our authority, what's not. Generally speaking, the ability to, to franchise, to set franchise-free fees in amount of, not to exceed five percent of gross revenues, requiring PEG, establishing and enforcing rules for the construction and maintenance of equipment in rights-of-way, all within our authority. And everything else is really under state and federal law. So, we're somewhat limited in what we can and can't negotiate, and those standards are set forth in both the Cable Act as well as the Illinois Act and Video Consumer, Customer Protection Law. Interestingly, the last time we were here looking at a franchise in the mid-two thousands, it was right before they passed the state act in two thousand and seven. A lot of things had changed right now, actually, operators aren't required to have a local franchise. Comcast has continued that practice. AT&amp;T, MediaCom, there's various other players that have entered the market as a result of that legislation that was passed at the state level. So, that statute really limits what we can and can't negotiate. A lot of this is, is form, and these standards up here sort of indicate that as well. Program offerings, technical standards, emergency alert, all that's done through the state and federal level, so not really within our purview either. So, that's just a quick review of sort of our, our legal sort of framework that we have to, to operate within. When we compare these agreements, as a result of that legislation that was passed, the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus and Comcast negotiated a model template that's been used by a majority of the communities within the North Shore and throughout Illinois to serve as a basis for a franchise agreement. Those terms were equitably and fairly negotiated with Comcast, and a lot of them are reflected here in, in the franchise. And, you know, specifically, we're seeking to, to maintain quite a bit of, of what has been in there. And then, I guess I view this more as an extension of the existing privilege, but I want to go through some of these standards to, to make sure we can see how, how the proposed two thousand and eighteen agreement would compare to the existing or expiring agreement. Construction standards, we have a, a pretty substantial right-of-way ordinance. Standards, construction standards, access, maintenance of utilities and our rights-of-way, those standards remain in place. Technical standards, again, a lot of this is reflective of the FCC or the Illinois Commerce Commission that already regulates a lot of these areas. Customer service, we do not have the ability to enforce stricter standards, but we can do, what we can do is enforce penalties, and we have done that through chapter one-nineteen of our city code. So, that provision is on there. Franchise fees has been maintained at five percent of gross revenues. The term has been maintained at ten years. And then, of course, our existing PEG channels, public education, government access channels, we have two channels currently. Those would be maintained with the option of additional in the event capacity group for that down, down the road. So, a lot of the terms in the existing agreement have been maintained or proposed to maintain with the, with the renewal, and a ten-year agreement would enter into sometime in November, which would be then good through two thousand and twenty-eight. So, with that, really, tonight, really looking for a first reading of, of the ordinance. We would be required to come back. We did post some information online about the fact that we're going to be renewing this. We received one comment from the public, I think that was shared with, with council, but have not, not received many, many comments or feedback on this at this point. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or discuss any terms in the agreement if you have specific questions about, about that.
What's the, what did we collect in the last fiscal year in franchise fees?
Yeah, this year, we are estimating around five-hundred-and-thirty thousand. With, I guess the, I don't know if this is good news, with the general election, we see those revenues tend to go up a little bit because of the cost for ads and things. But right now, we're sort of on pace and tracking around that five-hundred to five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar mark.
Is what, entirely fed into the general fund, or does it have a special?
Correct. General fund revenue.
General fund revenue, okay. Any questions?
So, what caught my attention was, and I have trouble with the remote control, so this is boring to me, but when you say non-exclusive cable television franchise agreement, so what does that look like, non-exclusive? What else are we putting in these rights-of-way or whatever?
Well, the state act, well, I think it's federal law prohibits us from doing exclusive franchise agreements, and that's a, a lot of it has to do with ensuring access to the marketplace. So, providers are somewhat protected from municipalities or local franchising authorities from exclusively entering into agreements with only one, one provider. So, it's a really way to preserve the market and provide access to it. So, you know, alternatively, providers could go to the state and get a state franchise, which means they still have to follow our permitting procedures and, and go through that, but they would be able to install infrastructure to provide cable, cable services. So, the non-exclusivity is really a limitation we have from the, the Cable Act. But it basically allows other providers to come in and say, we'd like to enter into an agreement with, with the city because we have a non-exclusive...
We could have alternative providers for our cable.
Correct, yes.
Televisions. That's what I was sort of getting at, okay.
But, I mean, it also includes the fact Comcast has got to allow AT&amp;T, for example, to provide phone service over their lines, or is that not part of that?
Telecommunications is not, right? This is really regulating video cable, cable service, information like internet, phone, telecoms, that's all regulated more by the Illinois Commerce Commission.
Okay. Other questions?
Move to approve first reading.
Second. Is this a voice vote? Is there an opportunity for public comment? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to ask a question? Seeing none, we have a motion, and it's a roll call vote. What's that?
A voice vote.
Okay, I can't even read this hour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, we have to go back because we skipped opportunity for the public for non-agenda items. Not that there's no public here, but you need to at least open it up and then close it.
That was right before the omnibus.
I thought I did that.
No harm, no foul.
Opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.